Welcome to the first hearing of the committee's inquiry into rural housing and second dwellings reform. My name is John Riddick and I'm the Chair of the Committee. I ask everyone in the room to please turn their mobile phones to silence. Parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses in relation to the evidence they give today. However, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of the hearing. I urge witnesses to be careful about making comments to the media and to others after completing their evidence. In addition, the Legislative Council has adopted rules to provide procedural fairness for inquiry participants. I encourage committee members and witnesses to be mindful of these procedures. So our first witness is Mr Troy Myers from the Urban City Group who's with us now. So welcome and thank you for taking the time to give evidence.
Thank you.
Could you please state your name and position, title, and swear either an oath or an affirmation?
My name's Troy Anthony Myers. I'm the director, excuse me, the Director of Urban City Group. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you, Mr Myers. Okay, so would you like to start by making a short statement, telling us a little bit about your professional career and what Urban City Group does?
So Urban City Group started with myself about 22 years ago. I started, we started as a building certification company and then we slowly grew into town planning as well. We started that, we started the Urban City Group in 2003. We're mainly in the Hawkesbury area. Quite lucky really, that's where we grew, I grew up. Managed to set the business up there, marry there, kids have grown up there, so we haven't really gone far. But, um, but thank you for having me today. I don't know, is there anything else that you?
No, no, that's all right. Now, you're familiar with the, when I moved this, I tabled the draft model instrument. You're familiar with this document?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you speak to the draft model instrument and the proposed reforms to the SEP? Why is it necessary to override various LEPs?
I think, well, what we've found is that it's been very difficult to be able to get approval for second dwellings on rural lands, especially in, I mean, only from experience in the Hawkesbury. But I think it's necessary because I just don't think that with the DA process, they'll be able to achieve what we need to achieve, and that is multi-generational housing. We, I think at the moment, to be able to put it into the SEP, it just gives more choice, more variety, for people wanting to be able to either get into the market or looking after parents or grandparents looking after grandkids. I think the SEP just, yeah, it just gives that level of flexibility and choice. And I don't think that every single second dwelling will be able to be compliant development. I just, but I also think by putting it in the housing SEP, it gives people, still, it doesn't eliminate people from the process of being able to get a second dwelling. They'll be able to lodge a development application and possibly get approval under the SEP or the LEP. I mean, this all started when myself and councillor St Brockner from Hawkesbury City Council decided to take one little word out of our land use table in our, in our Hawkesbury LEP. And it was the word attached, it was just one single word. And all we're saying is let the community decide what type of house they want, whether it be attached or detached for their second dwelling.
In the draft model instrument, the opening paragraph sort of outlines three different ways. That if this, if this inquiry comes to the conclusion that this is a reform that we should suggest.
Yeah.
It says, I'll just, just read this opening paragraph. It says, "The instrument amends the State Environmental Planning Policy Housing 2021 Housing SEP by adding a new division under Part Two, Diverse Housing. Alternatively, it could be a Rural Housing Code within the State Environmental Planning Policy exempting complying development codes, or amend the standard instrument, Local Environment Plan. The housing SEP is preferred for its ability to override inconsistent LEPs under Section 3.28 of the Environmental Planning and Assessment Act." So there are three different ways of doing it. What would be your professional opinion on what would be the, the best way if we were to change legislation and guidelines, et cetera? What would be the best way to do that?
I think all three should be done. So I think by changing the housing SEP, and probably, I think it's, you'd add Chapter Seven under the Diversity Housing Code is that, that would be able to override any LEPs that didn't allow detached dual occupancies. And I think by putting, and you could also do it as complying under that SEP, but I think the Rural Housing Code SEP would also assist in that. That would provide all the provisions for the complying development for second dwellings. And I think in the standard instrument, all I'd be doing is changing dual occupancy to get rid of the word attached and just put dual occupancy in. And that would give people the choice to decide whether they want an attached dual lock or they don't. And the housing SEP would be, give a guide in terms of the development standards that you would want in that standard instrument.
Now, Mr Myers, some of the submissions we've received were quite enthusiastic about not just having a second dwelling, but actually letting, making it easier for landowners to subdivide. Now, I don't think that this parliament's got an appetite for that, but we would be interested to hear on your view on, do you think that detached second dwellings is, is the end goal? Or do you think that actually letting landowners subdivide would be the ideal?
The end goal's always been just a second dwelling. I mean, of course, everyone would like to subdivide and make money out of selling a block of land these days, but the end goal is, like we said, multi-generational housing. And I think it's a simple change. I don't think, have we, I don't think we have the appetite for subdivision, even in ourshire at this point in time. But this was just a simple way to be able to provide housing for families. Subdivisions would be dealt with in a totally different section in the LEP. When the, I know when our councillors asked what they should do, and I said, just do what you always do and say no. In terms of subdivision and, but there's, to be serious though, subdivision is totally separate from dual occupancies. Dual occupancies would be, you know, are land use, subdivision is too, but it's dealt within a different part of the LEP. So they never really meet. And even if you wanted to change subdivision, you'd have to go through a rezoning to be able to, to change that. And that's not what we're about. We're about just getting that second dwelling. And essentially, instead of attaching it, detaching it, that's where, that's where it all came from. Why does it need to be attached? You know, there's extra costs, there's, you know, it's inflexible. Let's just give people choice so it suits the situation they're in.
Okay, thank you. Opposition?
Do we go first or?
You go first.
Thank you very much, Mr Myers, for being here today. I guess your submission and what you've told us already draws very much this distinction between the attached and the detached. What effectively is the, is the impact or difference when it comes to an attached dwelling or a detached dwelling when it comes to the infrastructure you saw the needs on a, on a community?
I don't think, I don't think anything changes. I think it stays the same. So whether it's attached or detached in terms of, well, let me start. The benefits would be, if we can detach them, is we don't have to go and spend an extra $50,000 to $100,000 joining them together. Because once we join them together, we've got to comply with the building code and we've got to have, you know, fire-rated walls. And trying to retrofit an existing dwelling to fit a new construction is just money we probably don't need to spend to provide that level of housing. So if we, if we can divide them, then, you know, it gives us that flexibility in terms of location for bushfire purposes, for biodiversity. We may be able to avoid areas we don't need to touch for biodiversity. Or we may be able to achieve the asset protection zones that we need for fire safety where we otherwise wouldn't if we had to attach them. And same with effluent disposal. We need to still do all those things. Those things don't change. But I think the biggest, you know, and the other one from a social point of view is no matter how much you love your family, sometimes six metres is just too close. That little bit of separation helps. But, um, yeah, I, I don't think that in terms of infrastructure, they may be the only thing that they really need to examine. I think councils will need a real strong 7-1-1 contributions plan. I think roads would be the big, the big one because I think the uptake will be, will be good, likely to be strong. But I think roads would be the main one because when you think about it now, we collect our own water, we dispose of our own effluent, we even collect our own power now. So there's not, not like we have to go and put whole new sewer systems in or whole new water systems in or new power systems. They're already there. So I don't think, that's why, that's why it was so attractive, it was just so simple.
And, and Mr Myers, your experience, as you outlined, comes largely from the Hawkesbury. Have you found other areas where there's different interpretations and things are working better?
Yeah, Penrith does it really well. I know Hills has a secondary dwelling version of what we're talking about. And then just with my research, I know that there was some Northern, Northern New South Wales councils that were also doing detached dual occupancies as well. But we deal a lot in Penrith. I mean, anywhere in that North West we deal with, but the appetite is there in all of those council areas. We, we hear it every day with people walking in through the door.
And to that point, this is very much about needing, meeting the demands of the market. As you outlined, it's, it's very much the intergenerational living model, so to speak. And not everyone wants to live under the same roof and six metres might be enough, or 10 metres, or 12, or maybe the other side of the paddock. But if this were, if this were to be changed, how much demand do you see there in the market?
I reckon, I believe that demand would be huge. Just speaking from experience, there wouldn't be a week go by where someone walks in my front door asking, you know, can we put it, can we put another house on the property for little Johnny or mum and dad? Not well, we need to look after them. It happens all the time. And then what generally happens is that they, they start looking for alternatives that may be suitable but not necessarily legal. So they might say, okay, well, we'll put a development application in for a tourist and visitor accommodation, which by definition is only supposed to be used infrequently, but it still looks like a dwelling. You know, if it looks like a duck, walks like a duck, it's a duck. But that's what happens, you start putting people in these difficult positions where they've got no choice and they've got to try and make, you know, a silk purse out of a sow's ear, trying to get some other type of development approved on the property that might not necessarily be legal. But yeah, I think the uptake would be huge. In our area alone, I think we've got the ability to have another 7,000 dwellings. I don't think all those would happen at once, but I think the uptake would be huge. My concern when we had the LEP was that if we did get it, or it's on the way of getting through the LEP, which is fantastic, but my fear is, is that the processing of development applications is horrendously slow out where we are for no real reason, but they are very slow. So we're talking, you know, six, 12, 18 months just to get a DA through where we are at the moment. And the, the cost is horrendous for people. You know, we're talking, you know, upwards of $25,000 per application, whereas complying development, you know, everyone knows what they have to do. You know, the cost, you're probably looking from an approval point of view, you know, you know you're going to be able to get out of it for probably $15,000 instead of having to go spend away a whole lot more money and a whole lot more time and angst to try and get the same thing.
Now, you noted also in, just to move away from the secondary dwellings somewhat, but in your submission about how ancillary developments such as sheds or pools can't be approved via CDC where there's more than one dwelling on site. How much of an impediment do you see this being in terms of getting what would be fairly simple and non-impactful improvements to the home or the property?
It's a huge impediment. I mean, it happens now. We have, say like, we'll, we can have attached dual occupancies or we have detached dual occupancies in Penrith. Say, and people come to us just to put the little garage or a shed or a pool, and we can't issue a compliant development certificate now for, because of that reason. So it's, it's a huge impediment. And I don't understand why, why, why that would be the case. If you've got a permissible use on that site, it's a dual lock, it's a residential use, then why wouldn't you allow those things that are, and so read that to that use? What, what does it really change? I don't think it changes anything. I, um, yes, I don't really understand why, why it's in there, but I know it's a huge impediment. And I know that things would flow a lot quicker if you, if you were allowed to issue those, some type of developments as complying where there is two dwellings.
Just on that, could I ask why, or what is the process? If you have two dwellings on a residential site, what is the process then if you do want to add a pool or a shed?
You can no longer do compliant development on that site ever again. It basically eliminates you.
So, so what would be the cost to an applicant to, I guess, to have a pool or a shed added to the property?
It's significant. So you're going from, you're going from a one-stage process in complying to a two-stage process. So obviously, development application, then construction certificate. So you're doubling your costs there. So I mean, I would think that your cost either double or triple at least.
So what we really need to do is not only consider this issue, we need to consider, I guess, the unintended consequences that will also flow. And maybe whilst we're, if we, yeah, if we are to, to make amendments, that we need to have a look at the wider issue and make sure that those unintended consequences don't flow on so that we make the changes to make sure that people can actually achieve things like pools and sheds into the future.
I think it'd be, it'd be a good idea. I definitely think that should be something to consider. Yeah, like you said, if you don't want to go and then create this great new type of development, but then it inhibits you from being able to do the things that you were normally allowed to do.
And you spoke about the cost, $25,000 odd dollars, I think, for an application and 12 to 18 months for, you know, the application process to be considered. What would you think is achievable if we were to streamline the process and basically get government and councils out of the way, remove the red tape, and have a pro-housing policy that, moving forward?
I don't think you can ever get rid of it. I think in terms of streamlining it, I mean, how long have I got to talk on this?
We've got to talk 10:30, Mr Myers.
Good, okay.
So we've got another good 12 minutes.
If you don't mind, the long answer is, it's, it's from the very beginning. So I, I have my daughter here today and she, she now works with me and hopefully one day I'll work for her.
You don't already?
That's right. And so I've watched her go through, and this is, this is going to get, I'll get to the point. I've watched her go through her studies as a town planner in the last four years. And she's done very well, but what I did, what I, what I noticed is that most of her subjects were to do with town planning in the first two years of her study. They were to do with social science issues and the universities were giving, were giving, and I know this also because we participate in the intern program for a couple of universities. So we take, you know, students in to help them with their hours. So what we're noticing is, is that they're very social science-based and then they're pushing students on to a masters, which I think is a bit of a cash grab in terms of, they're not really learning to be town planners when they're going to do a town planning degree. They're making them go to a masters to be able to do that. So what's happened over a, a, a long period of time, I believe, is that we've now got people coming into the industry that aren't totally confident and been able to make those judgment calls they need to make. And when we used to be able to do merit-based assessment, then you're getting a lot of people now turning development applications into complying development applications because they're using DCPs as code-based development instead of, the whole point of a DA is a merit-based because you've got to go to that higher level of assessment. And I think, and so my point is, is that they don't have the confidence to be able to argue on, on, you know, on balance or merit, why something that may not 100% comply with the DCP should be approved like we used to be able to. And, and one of the lecturers asked me why, you know, Imogen did so well. And I said, well, she should because she's grown up with it, number one. But number two, she was working full-time the whole time she was studying. So she was getting that experience and I would think, and there were other local government members in the room when we were talking about the review of their curriculum. And I think, you know, it should be mandatory that after their first year, they go out and they have to do an internship, and that would change the industry. So I think there's that level of confidence. And I think there's, there's this fear factor in there too, that, that the, that the staff are under siege all the time. The legislation's become so complex and so laden. So I think you still need to have an assessment. You have to remember before 1998, we never needed consent for housing. We used to be, we used to have a, a building application under the local government act. And so agriculture and housing did not need consent.
And I think that was sort of what I was aiming to get to. Do you think that it's possible that we can actually set a, a list of criteria that if we achieve these certain aspects, the size of the block, the size of the dwelling, the footprint, the connections to services, if we can tick the boxes on all of those things, that we can just get out of the way and we can make sure that people can actually build these much-needed dwellings on large, you know, rural blocks and, and assist people with finding that housing that we desperately need?
Absolutely. It's the way, it's definitely the way to go, you know? I agree with you totally. If you can set those minimum or maximum, minimum standards, whatever you want to call them, which is compliant development does, like compliant development's pretty rigid when you think about it. You know, there's, it's like a game of snakes and ladders and there's more snakes than there is ladders in terms of not being able to achieve what you need to achieve. But I definitely do agree that if you set those minimum standards. But, you know, and I guess what you have to look at too when you're going through making these changes, with complying development, it's become so complex that you can't read it in isolation. And so, you know, there's, you can get caught out, even though you think you're doing the right thing, you can get caught out. So you need to go back and, we need to just make it simple again. We've made it too complicated. Yeah, so I do agree. If you, if we could do that, I, I think that would make a, a big difference. And I think we could, you know, look after all those housing needs, yeah.
Thank you.
We'd like to hear from the government, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks so much for your evidence so far and your perspectives. Certainly good to have someone with your experience and hear from. In terms of your submission, I just had a couple of questions around some of your recommendations. So one of those being the department considering streamlining approval processes and ensuring clear, consistent interpretation of the SEP across councils and certifiers. You cite ambiguity in language as, as, you know, leading to inconsistent application and creating delays. I wondered if you could give us any examples of that from your experience and suggestions for improvement?
The definition of environmentally sensitive land, if you were to go and have a look at that, there's about eight sub clauses and one in particular, I think, is either G or J. And in there, it says that you have to look, it says environmentally sensitive land, you know, I don't know the exact words, but what it does say is, it says, or any other environmental planning instrument. So when you consider that every SEP is an environmental planning instrument, every LEP is an environmental planning instrument, what it's essentially saying is if I want to issue that approval for that house, I have to go and look at every single SEP and make sure that every definition of environmentally sensitive land is looked at in, in trying to approve that application. And even to the point now where you'll find that councils on their 10.7 planning certificates will say that they can't tell us whether it can be compliant development or not on environmentally sensitive land because they don't have enough information to be able to make that decision. So if they don't, how, how would we? So I think it's just got to get down to, you know, we've got, we've got to get away from making these definitions that are like so broad, that captures everything, when really we're trying to minimize things and trying to streamline things. And you can't do that. You can't try and minimize when you're creating these broad definitions. And there seems to be this fear that everyone wants to go out and cut down trees and, you know, and, you know, and, I mean, we live in courage on, the last thing we want to do is make it look terrible. And, and, I know, so there's always a balance. And I think, yeah, that's one of them. Another one would be if I'm trying to do a, an outbuilding on rural land and I have a vegetable farm next to mirror intensive agriculture, then I'm not allowed to. I have to have a 250 metre setback away from that boundary for my shed. I understand for a house because there may be issues in terms of, you know, spray drift or all those sort of things that you want to deal with. But for a shed or, or anything like that, I don't understand why they'd want you to be 250 metres away from that farm. The guy on the farm can put his shed in, he's got no problem, but the person living next to it can't put it, put his shed on. So it doesn't make sense to me. I'm sure there are others, but, um.
If you think of any more, feel free to, to send them through on notice. Yeah, sorry, sorry to put you on the spot.
No, that's fine.
But it's a, you know, interesting examples. In terms of your suggested changes, and my colleague Scott Farlow already asked you about, you know, some of these other considerations for outbuildings and ancillary developments. In terms of what you're proposing to, to Part 3A, what do you see as being the benefits of that? And then are there any risks that you can foresee as well?
Benefits in terms of housing?
So this is, they're currently with, ancillary development cannot be approved via a CDC when there's more than one dwelling located on a property, yeah?
Well, once again, I think you're going to speed up the process whereby, you know, people aren't waiting six months for their shed and, and the DA costs more than what the shed costs to build. That's right. So, I mean, particularly in our area, like you have to think that 30% of our workforce in Hawkesbury is in the construction industry. And every, and if you were to go down in the morning and sit on Richmond Road, you'd see the procession into the city for the, for those guys to be able to go to work. And, and so in our area, we have the misconception that the whole of the Hawkesbury gets covered in water when we have floods and it's not the true, it's not, not the way it happens, but often it gets used for slowing things down. But, yeah, my answer is, is yeah, the second, if you're going to do, if you're going to allow it as compliant development, then you do need to go through and have a look at the consequences for ancillary or outbuildings because they will get caught up. Even to the point now where you can't, I guess, it makes sense, but you can't put an ancillary development on until you have a house at least approved now. So if you want to go and put a shed on a vacant block of land, you can't do that now. You have to have a house there before you can have a shed there. But yeah, I think if you could streamline that, it'd be a big boost to their local economy, a big boost, big boost, you know, to employment. Often people want to be able to put sheds up before they start building because they want to be able to keep everything secure. Yeah.
Or live in a chouse, the old shed house.
There's some beautiful chouses around.
Yeah, there are.
There are. And it's often a, I mean, the chouse, there's a lot to be said for the chouse. There's a lot of people that need to start out and they want to, they want to be able to, they can't afford to go and build, you know, the big dream home straight away. So the chouse is a good answer to that, yeah.
Yeah.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, look, it does, thank you. In terms of, you mentioned, you know, the, the flood impact in, in the area of the Hawkesbury and you're setting your submission about detached dual locks, offering significant benefits. Obviously, the cost effectiveness is one. Are there any other benefits that you can see of that, of that, having that detached dual lock?
Yeah, like I said, families looking after families, you know, and I reckon it'll, I, I believe that it'll reduce the impact on old age care, age, you can age in place. I know, I don't want to go to a nursing home and I'm hoping Imogen can build a house at home and look after me so I don't have to go. I think, you know, and at the same time.
Exactly excited, but.
No, she's, she's, she's a good poker player. She keeps, she's really close to a chest. Yeah. Yeah, so I think, you know, even looking after grandkids, I mean, childcare is a huge cost now. And if, you know, grandparents can look after grandkids while mum and dad go off to work, I think that's a good thing, so. Or, you know, there's people who want to invest in the area that need the extra income and they, you know, they, they don't have to go and buy the block of land again. The land's already there, so they can build another house and they can get an income from it. So financially, that helps them.
One of the common objections that comes up, of course, is around, you know, from, from a council perspective and the ability to rate and recoup additional costs, you know, if you've got a second dwelling that's been inhabited. You know, the council can't necessarily get additional rates for, you know, the additional waste, the additional, all the other things. So it's, it's a common objection that comes up. Have you got any suggestions for how that can be?
I've got a question.
Tackled, yeah.
How's it any different to the situation we're already in? You're already allowed to build them. You've just got to attach them. And what we're saying is detach them. So it's already a development that's permissible under the LEP. You can already have two houses on a block of land. All we're saying is let them be detached. So I don't know why they'd be making those arguments when it's a permissible development already. I guess, I guess you'd have to ask them. I think that's why you need to have a good 7.11 and maybe, and it's a big conversation we're having at the moment. I mean, our council's asking us for a 40% rate rise and everyone's really happy at the moment. I think that maybe you need to have a look at the levers that they can pull and maybe having a second dwelling might be a way to have a, you know, be able to get those rates or those costs in. Or that may be, I know, that might be an option where it's in lieu of getting the 7-1-1s and getting that sugar hit up front, that maybe that can be done over time, so that they've got an income, a consistent income stream coming in. But you'd have to go and change, I don't know, I mean, I'm, I'm not across all how rates and that work and the levers are available.
Parts involved and.
Yeah, that's right. But, um, there, there's, yeah, I, I still think they've still got enough there to be able to, to be able to get what they need from, from the development, yeah. Just depends on what their seven, their contribution plan is going to do.
Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, thank you, government. Well, thank you very much, Mr Myers. We, we've enjoyed your presentation and good luck in the business, Imogen, and with your studies. And we are now going to have a short 15-minute break and we'll be back at 10:45.
Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome back to the inquiry into rural housing and second dwelling reform. We're now joined by Mr Leo Patterson Ross. So thank you very much for joining us, sir. Could you please state your name and your position title and swear either an oath or an affirmation?
Yeah, Leo Patterson Ross, CEO of the Tenants Union of New South Wales. And I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. Now, would you like to start with by making a short statement telling us about a summary of your submission and what the the tenants' union does?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Committee, for the invitation to appear. The Tenants Union is a specialist community legal centre, but really in this appearance, we're primarily or relevantly the resource service and peak for a network of tenants' advice and advocacy services who collectively assist between thirty-five and forty thousand renters across the state directly to navigate issues relating to their rental, including through advice, negotiation, advocacy and representation services. Of the fifteen general services, eight are located in the area impacted by the terms of reference, as are three of the four Aboriginal managed and focused services, who are also supported by our colleagues at the Aboriginal Resource Unit. In towns such as Port Macquarie, Tamworth and Albury, the townships have renting populations higher than the state average. Tamworth, for instance, is forty percent renters at the last census. Though one in three New South Wales renters live in regional areas, almost half, or just more than sixteen thousand of the renters who TAS assisted each year, last year rather, are from regional New South Wales. We drew on that significant experience, as well as the advocates themselves, and considering the proposal this committee is looking at. And we acknowledge the planning restriction that currently is preventing a family household from making the decisions that it might like to, to manage its own needs on its land. And multi-generational living can be very helpful in a range of areas of life. And family units are also generally well placed to resolve issues around shared areas, around the way that that property is managed. However, once you start dealing with people outside your family unit, particularly for a financial incentive, there needs to be more thought given to that legal relationship and the services being provided. So we're concerned that too easily allowing secondary dwellings for rental use will exacerbate existing issues, particularly related to the management of properties, the infrastructure, the rights that tenants have, and will fail to deliver genuinely affordable and secure housing. Part of the reason we think this, as we have seen the city version of this since two thousand and nine, with the relaxing of rules around granny flats or secondary dwellings, as well as the smaller dwellings that are already currently allowed in regional areas. So our primary recommendation from the, from our submission was to ensure that if a wider range of secondary dwellings are permitted to be built, that by the time that personal or family usage is severed, then there should be a formal subdivision of the lot, or at least some other mechanism by which to manage that, that relationship. This will ensure that a lot of the issues we've seen, boundary issues, utilities and services connections, and as well as potentially under planning rules, consideration of the community's general housing needs can be taken into account. And it would support the leasing out of property being done with eyes open as to the statutory obligations of a lesser. So happy to take questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Look, I really enjoyed your submission, so thank you. And it did make us think about this idea of subdivision. Now, I'm personally on your side on that question, okay, but I don't think this parliament will be. So maybe that could be something that could be looked at in the future. But you did just say then that, and I get your point about subdivision, if it's vague, if there's one title and two sort of households living there, there's all sorts of little, little, little problems which I'm sure that you deal with. But you did just say then that there could be, and you did say subdivision or some other mechanism of dealing with that. So I'm keen to, if you could flesh out what could be another mechanism, because I agree with you, there's going to be, there're going to be sort of vague rules between the landlord and the tenant, and it's, in some cases, it could get messy.
So we didn't have a specific alternative. Subdivision is the obvious route. Some of the ways that you could imagine it would be analogies from things like strata, community titles. What's, the, the elements that are necessary is probably what we'd focus on. And that is some way of clearly defining the lot, the boundary that is being leased out, so that you can say, this is your area and this is my area. Making sure that the relevant authorities, including councils and utility providers, are aware of the dwellings that are there and need to be serviced, because that's something that keeps coming up for, for properties, including granny flats in metro as well as in regional. Auspost and these similar sort of services, who often aren't aware of what has happened on the lot. And once you have started entering into a leasing arrangement and you do have obligations around, for instance, service of documents between the parties, who might be, you know, on either side of a fence or a boundary line, if Australia Post is serving one party's documents back to their own address, it just clearly becomes cumbersome and less useful. We also have heard reports, that, one of them is in the submission, of areas where the access routes and the ways to access a property are unclear as to whose obligation it is, and a subdivision generally makes that clearer, because you have the line back to sort of the common, common roads, streets and services. So those elements of clarity around the area, clarity of who is in control of that property at, under one time, whether it's ownership or lease, is what's needed. And subdivision provides that, but we could imagine a world where Parliament comes up with a, another option.
How, I mean, there are, there are already lots of properties across New South Wales where there's a single title and two, two dwellings for whatever reason. How often are you actually seeing in your, in your organisation, are you seeing complaints from tenants in that arrangement? I mean, is this a common thing, or is this, are we saying, are we speculating that this could be the case?
Yeah, we, not everybody knows the titling and division arrangements of their property, so they're not always disclosed to us. When I was looking at our statistics over the last year, we did see hundreds of people contacting us about their, about properties that they said were either rural dwellings, which may be wholly owned, or semi-detached or duplexes. And they were in regional areas as well as in the city. We saw a increased level of complaint around utilities and services, in particular in regional areas. So I said almost half, it's exactly forty-seven percent of people seeking advice or receiving advice from the TAS were in regional areas. But sixty percent of the utilities and services complaints were from regional areas. So that's where we think that this lack of clarity that already exists and is often associated with multiple dwellings on one side is coming through already, and so we're concerned about it continuing and becoming greater into the future.
Okay, so just, just quickly before I hand over to the opposition, would you be comfortable with a regulation that if a second dwelling is rented, the development must comply with existing rental tenancy standards as a condition of approval? Would that be sufficient for you to alleviate your concerns?
Compliance with the Residential Tenancy Act and the regulations is already a contract term and already a legal obligation. So promising to do something that isn't currently always being performed, it may or may not help. There is an element here where we have a renting system where the barrier to entry as an investor is very low, not in terms of price, which is obviously quite high, but unlike a food service business, unlike any other business essentially in New South Wales, you don't have to have any understanding, any education around what your obligations are. You receive that ideally at the point of entering into a lease. Now, there is an information statement that manager, property managers have to provide to landlords and landlords assert that they have read before entering into the contract. But we haven't yet seen that this has necessarily informed everybody of all of the kinds of things that you would want to be appraised of, that you have the cash flow, that you have the finances to maintain your obligations. And so I think we would be worried that people would attest to that, and probably in good faith, but not necessarily have the backing, the backup of the knowledge in order to do it.
Thank you. Opposition?
Thank you. Thank you very much for your submission, for your attendance today. I guess in terms, and I take your point in terms of the number of complaints, but isn't one of the fundamental challenges in terms of regional New South Wales the, the lack of rental stock that's available, that compared to the city in particular, that there are so few rentals available in regional New South Wales?
Look, the vacancy rates in regional New South Wales are low, as they are in metro. We've sort of got a system-wide problem there that we don't have enough homes that meet people's needs and in all of the areas that they'd like to live, including regionally. I think that the, the, the suggestion we're making around subdivision also came with a suggestion that maybe that subdivision could be made easier. There might be elements, and look, we're not the experts in the ins and outs of that kind of planning reform, but there may be ways to make that switch easier to achieve, so that it's not necessarily blocking the actual construction of the dwelling, but it is just making that process clearer, it's saying, this is what the, the different obligations, the different dwellings are. So I think that we do need a range of ways to make sure that there are homes that are available, available to people that are meeting their needs. This proposal is about essentially increasing the size of those, and certainly we have an issue where families don't have enough homes, that they can have enough room to live in. So there's some benefit there. We just need that clarity, that essentially the accountability of when you're, when you're leasing out this property, that you know what your boundaries are, both geographically and contractually.
Thank you. And look, and I take it from Mr Ruddock's proposition to you as well, you're not against there being alternative mechanisms that could be looked at apart from subdivision itself?
Yeah, I think, as I said, we're not the, the technical experts in the planning law, all the ins and outs. We can imagine that there's a way to weave this path that doesn't require full formal subdivision. What that is, we're not best placed to suggest.
No, thank you. And I take it also in regional New South Wales that some of the rental arrangements that you would encounter and that some people would bring to you might be a little bit less conventional than what they perhaps are in the city. Is that a fair characterisation?
Yeah, so, and we detail this in the, in the submission, there's a much greater level of self-managed properties in regional New South Wales. Forty-seven percent self-managed, rather than seventy-plus percent in metro areas. And I think that goes back to, you know, that understanding of the Residential Tenancies Act, the Residential Tenancies Regulation, as well as planning for the provision of rental housing, maintaining properties, making sure that they're up to standard and so on. I think it's also fair to say that putting aside, you know, the, the quality, it is also the relationships. And when people have a large block of land, the, the formality of the different, of the relationship there may not be as much, because it's essentially my, my big lot, I've put a house on it or I've put a dwelling on it, and I've leased it out, and that's enough. And maybe originally the person, you know, you knew them from town, they were essentially a friend, but then they move on, the next person comes in, the relationships change and alter. We've seen a number of contracts that just don't comply with the legislation. We've also seen, you know, standard form agreements, but then with many additional terms that don't comply or are very unusual, but maybe they do comply. We've seen a range of disputes come up, particularly in relation to the services and utilities, that when those go wrong, particularly with water, that can put a lot of pressure on, on, on households. These are essential services, it's required to have a healthy home. And access provisions is the other area where, you know, you might have a, a property in the middle of a farm and maybe the animals, you know, managed, whether formally or, you know, the dogs run around. Managing those relationships and both of the property owner and of the resident, people come up with sometimes creative solutions.
One of the other concerns you raised in your submission was with respect to short-term rentals and these properties being transitioned across to short-term rentals. We heard from our witness prior that one of the loopholes people use at the moment is in terms of tourism accommodation and effectively creating tourism accommodation on these sites, rather than a secondary dwelling. Is that so much of a problem then, if you've already got that loophole that exists?
Look, I mean, any loophole then has unintended consequences. I don't, I'm not familiar with that particular term, and the, as in the, the term of the planning law, and how that would impact or interplay with this proposal. I think what we would say is, we, we really want to see a much better systemic approach to the provision of both short-term holiday accommodation and longer-term residential accommodation. We don't really have the balance right, particularly in regional areas. We've seen a number of towns who have really struggled to keep people in employment in the local area because they've been priced out or displaced for the tourism accommodation. There has to be a balance there. The town might need that tourism industry, but we need to make sure that there's the workforce and the community to support it, and often to make the community the attractive place that it was to, to start with.
So wouldn't an initiative like this, being able to increase secondary dwellings on rural properties, help to alleviate some of those concerns, even if it were to create, for instance, a short-term rental accommodation piece, that that might be a short-term rental accommodation piece that wasn't taking away an existing dwelling at the moment? Or alternatively, provide additional accommodation for people working in the tourism industry or the like?
Exactly. So we, our recommendations around short-term renting is that councils are given a lot more ability to look at the current mix, the current availability of stock in the area, and make better decisions around whether a currently rented out, if a long-term residential use could or should be converted. This kind of proposal and allowing a tourism accommodation on, on a larger farm lot might well mean that that balance is easier to achieve. At the moment, councils don't have that ability. That's the world we'd like to see, but you can certainly see a path there.
Thank you.
Just in relation to, I guess, the competing aspects of the rights of a renter versus the ability for people to actually find a rental property, what do you think is the greater priority at this time? Do you think it's ensuring that the second dwelling proposal doesn't impinge on renters' rights? Or do you think it's actually the case that for a lot of people, finding a rental property in and of itself is the hardest bit, and we need to increase the supply?
I think it always has to be a balance. It always has to be both. We are coming from a, a long way back in relation to tenancy rights in New South Wales. We have to improve both the quality and standard of the housing, the quality and standard of the management of the housing, and really the sort of, the general consensus about what the rental sector is trying to achieve. The rental sector should be trying to achieve homes for people, and that includes building new homes. But the, but at the moment, I think we have a, we're often trying to work across purposes. So I think that the, in a regional area where there's a significant shortage of dwellings, and that is the driving sort of problem, it might be that building more is needed. We also have to ask, like, what is being provided, what's going to, what's going to be the eventuality of this? It does need to be genuinely stable housing that people can rely on as their home for a period. And one of the concerns I suppose we have about this proposal without oversight is that the, what we have seen provided in regional areas, particularly on a, a property which is, where the, the, landholder who steps into the foot, into the, into the, to the shoes of the landlord by leasing it out, is that informality, is that lack of clarity, and that means that the home being provided isn't necessarily meeting the needs of that person. I think we, we have for too long accepted a substandard quality of housing and said, well, you know, you, you need to accept that because it's the best we've got. I think we can do better. We're a very wealthy country, we're a very sophisticated system and democracy. We can achieve much better results, both through supply and through the experience of renting.
Without sounding flippant, that, that's a very philosophical approach, isn't it, to, I guess, the holistic view of renting in, in New South Wales, particularly rural regional parts? But in reality, it's the supply side that is under great pressure at the moment. Increasing supply would assist people in finding rental properties, would it not?
So increasing supply would assist people in finding a rental property. Whether that property meets their needs is the, is the point I was, I was making. I think that the, and yes, look, I got very philosophical, and let's be practical. Planning reform, and including in the metro areas as well as regionally, is part of the process in order to achieve those, those properties. It doesn't guarantee a result. We can zone for a certain capacity, it's not going to get built at that level. So I think that we have the space to say, we are planning for properties and we're going to make those properties good quality and meeting the needs of the community. We've got the, the ability to do both.
And I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, is that the, the issue around renters' rights is, I guess, a different legislative issue compared to the issue around regional second dwellings. And we know the Minns Labor Government has been pretty poor in relation to rental rights. They mean, they, they say they'll do one thing and then turn around and do something else when Minns has a meeting with somebody, whoever, we know, we don't know exactly what happened there, but they reversed their position on a number of matters. But just in relation to the supply of housing, increasing supply will, I guess, potentially open more doors for people that can't find a rental property at the moment. That's, that's the reality, right?
Yes, but again, I, I think we can't say any door is better than, well, any door is better than no door.
Any door is better than no door. I think we can say that, yeah.
I think we, we can't accept that as the end result. And look, certainly tenants' rights should be separately to the, to the planning. Our recommendation around the subdivision is about making sure that that clarity of what you're providing is there, so that then whatever decisions are made.
But also feel free to, you know, have, provide a view on what you think about the Minns Labor Government, you know, turning back, turning their backs on renters as they did, you know, recently.
Mr Thing, let's just see if the government has some questions.
Thanks, Chair. Thank you. I do thank you. Thank you, Mr Ross, for appearing today. I wondered, in your submission, and thank you for the additional information about, so the issues that you're receiving, it's alarming to hear, you know, the percentage of which coming from regional New South Wales. Are you able to give us an indication of, and it may be something you have to take on notice, the number of those issues that relate to matters involving secondary dwellings?
I can take it on notice. It is a little difficult to say authoritatively because of that issue. Not, not everybody discloses, not everybody knows their, their titling arrangements, but we can take on notice and provide what we, what we are able to, that's, that's relevant.
Yeah, thank you. That would, it would be certainly interesting to see the, you know, whether that is a consistent theme amongst some of the complaints that you're receiving. In terms of, you know, the nature of some of those, and it's really good to have the examples that you've provided as well, in terms of access roads and metering requirements, given the number of granny flats or secondary dwellings that are sort of being built and some of the proposed, some of the potential benefits of those, you know, in alleviating the housing issues that we're facing, but then also some of the complexities that they throw in with the separate metering entitlements and various other things. It is recognised it's a common area of dispute in your submission. How do we, how do we improve that and the way that it's done? Is it, is it the case that we need to improve the education that's been provided, or the lack of that's been provided to landlords? Or what are your suggestions for, for assisting that?
So there's, just going to the development of granny flats and our history of it in, in New South Wales, and particularly in Sydney, I suppose there's two aspects to it. There's, the granny flats that are developed and put into a property and then either together or independently, people are either living, moving in and either as owners or renters. But that's a fresh arrangement, so the, the, the properties are there, the occupants come second. And that's where we have metering, we have issues around common areas, a lack of clarity around that. The, the second, and that's echoed it, the second aspect that is worth drawing out is where you're actually developing a property where somebody is already living. So they've, they've taken the lease out on a house with a yard, and halfway through their contract, they're informed that actually they're going to lose that yard. And there's, that is a breach of contract, there's a breach of access rights to, to do that. And they're often not given any compensation or any ability, or they're not informed of their or they're not informed of their ability to resist. They would need to get legal advice. And that's been a really frustrating area. And I think what it speaks to is a general lack of respect for renters' homes as their home and a lack of respect for the contract itself. And we've seen through the development of the eviction reforms, as just one example, that we keep resisting or we keep not taking up the opportunity to encourage more negotiation between the parties. So that if you are a property owner and you want to build a secondary dwelling in your backyard, you go to the occupant and you say, I'd like to take part of what our deal was, and I'd like to compensate you for that. And that's similarly with the new grounds around selling a property. There isn't actually a need to evict a person in order to sell a property. You can sell it and say to them, look, I'm going to compensate you for the year in convenience. If you need to leave earlier, I'm going to pay for your moving costs. We can negotiate this. Rather than using a kind of a cudgel of the law to say, I'm just going to control this dwelling. Negotiating, finding a common ground is often the best path through these kind of disputes. It usually means that both parties come out relatively happy, that there's less sort of resentment on either side, and the result happens. But our legislation and potentially, you know, this planning reform might not directly, but assist or facilitate a new path of people being pushed out of or losing part of what they thought they had agreed to, what they thought that had made a legal contract for. And underlying that is this respect for the rented home. And so we'd like to see that increased, and that's a crucial part of housing reform generally, is acknowledging that everybody's home actually is a really important place, a shelter, a place where they need to feel safe and stable for society to prosper.
And your submission also talks about housing standards, which I thought was an interesting observation in terms of, you know, potential changes if they're made. Planning laws will be important to ensure appropriate dwellings are built for the environment. Do you have any suggestions as how that could be required?
So in general, you know, the building quality standards through the construction code have improved, and newer buildings are generally much better than older buildings. But sometimes there are, and particularly in regional areas, I would say, what the construction code requires doesn't necessarily reflect the actual property in its location. Making sure that there's, you know, where there's foliage, good green coverage is really important rather than big open areas or particularly concreted and less natural areas. That because the environment around a dwelling can have a really big impact on the experience of living in it from a thermal comfort perspective. And we've seen this in Western Sydney is a particularly kind of poor example of allowing a lot of construction without thinking about how that will have an impact on the thermal comfort, on the foliage around it, to keep everything more comfortable and more energy efficient for everybody. So, you know, I suppose we have seen some very poor construction in regional areas over time. How much that would be an issue with this reform, which would be new dwellings? I think we would just want to make sure that those standards are there. We want to see that the outcome is good quality standards. But, you know, the more modern construction codes, when they're built to, you know, basics standards, where they have, I think we're up to seven, you know, that would be the, that kind of standard would generally be what we'd be looking for. But, and actually our bigger challenge in New South Wales is getting all existing dwellings up to that level.
Thank you. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pat Patterson-Rawson. I think you, thank you for your evidence. The Secretary will contact you in relation to the, you did take something on notice, I think, yes. Okay. But thank you very much. We enjoyed your presentation.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Development control rules and interpretation of zonings must rest primarily with local councils. Local councils already have the ability to consider secondary or dual occupancy dwellings in RU zones. They are best placed to determine whether or not such developments align with current plans, community expectations, and any potential impacts. And for those reasons, BPN does not support the use of complying developments in rural and conservation zones that include second dwellings. It's the wrong instrument as it seeks to override well-developed and well-acknowledged controls that are contained within existing LEPs. However, we believe that relaxation of some second dwelling restrictions may be possible in locations where transition to higher ground is warranted due to increased risks from climate change. And specifically here, I'm talking about higher sea levels, higher flood heights, and the combination of those. This would allow controlled retreat from high-risk locations. Dual occupancy could be allowable for the period of transition, which may in some instances take decades. This relaxation of restrictions in this special case provides reassurance for occupants as well as a temporary income stream or extended family dwelling for the period of transition. It also reduces the financial burden of climate impact on affected rural landowners and reduces the inevitable costs of buybacks, which generally fall back on every level of government.
Thank you. Well, I have a question for Ms. Burlioz. So you said that you don't believe that it's a good idea to have a one-size-fits-all that the state government imposes across the whole of New South Wales. Now, in an ideal sense, I agree with you. But this state is in a housing crisis right now. That's causing a lot of angst for millions of people. And this building needs to do something. Now, while you might be right in an ideal sense that these decisions should be devolved down to the local level, I think there's a consensus in this building that at the local level, the local council is one of the biggest causes of the housing crisis. And so this building does have to take action. And so while it may not be ideal, I think that we should do, we should use the power of this house to impose, to liberalise what people can do with their properties. What do you say about that?
I think the government's done it already in metropolitan areas in Greater Sydney and in there's capacity for increased housing, appropriate housing in some of the rural centres, like the town centres. But as far as strategic planning goes, this ad hoc kind of development in rural contexts where you've got agricultural lands, productivity to consider, means that there are certain risks that are associated with fragmentation of land. That can be conservation land. The subdivision of land so that you've got inconsistency with some of the local plans. I know some of the regional councils, and I'm not from a regional council, but I've read their submissions, have got strategic plans where they are envisaging subdivision in certain areas and that if rural lands outside those areas were to overdevelop, which could happen with all these subdivision patterns as is proposed in this, the possibility as proposed in this policy, means that you could end up with a concentration of dwellings outside the area that's planned strategically to develop housing which would be accommodated by the appropriate infrastructure. Because that's another thing, too. You've got to think of the infrastructure as well. So as far as the blanket approach, I think the, well, first of all, I have been on council and I'm not sure always that it's easy to blame councils for stopping development. But in this particular case, we're concentrating on rural lands and sea zones. And I reiterate that as presented in this policy, it is such an deregulation that it's, there's nothing to prove either that it is actually going to contribute significantly to the housing process or that there will be development in an appropriate way. I just don't, I'm sorry, I just don't agree with this ad hoc, top-down. And I can see more risk at losing certain things like agriculture, productivity, conservation lands.
Surely the footprint of building a second house is going to be of absolutely minuscule impact on farming. I mean, it's going to be like a quarter acre at most that's going to be taken up by the housing. And it means the agricultural productivity could increase because seasonal workers could live in that second residence.
But there is possibility already in LEPs for secondary houses. And there's also possibility, especially for workers, especially for workers' accommodation. So all of that is already a possibility.
Well, we have received a very high number of submissions from people, from landowners, and with one exception, they were all very, very much in favour of this. But could I ask Dr. Rawson, you said that councils are best placed to make these decisions?
Indeed, indeed.
Okay, but Dr. Rawson, do you acknowledge that they are not making these decisions?
No, I don't acknowledge that. I don't accept that premise. That is something that you've said and I don't agree with it. Certainly, the council in my area is very rapid when it comes to development applications and considers every single development application as quickly as it possibly can. There are many, many reasons why there are roadblocks to development. And it's not necessarily local councils and it's certainly not necessarily rural councils.
So in your council area, there are lots of second dwellings being built at the moment?
Well, actually, there's quite a few extra second dwellings in a place called Ugara where we've had to put in lots of pods to support the people whose town was essentially wiped out by flooding of epic proportions. So we actually changed, very rapidly changed the rules to allow for pods to be put in people's backyards. Now, and we've in fact extended that across the Shire to allow for smaller dwellings, secondary dwellings in rural areas. Because we believe that to be acceptable in many places. It's not acceptable everywhere. There are some lots, some particularly smaller lot sizes where the increase in the development density would have an impact on the local amenity, the community amenity, and also local services. So council services, the cost for services, that sort of thing.
I'd like to hand over to my colleague from the opposition.
Thank you. Dr. Rawson, just to that point in terms of those secondary dwellings, are you seeing sort of, are they in the tiny home configuration or are they the sort of van homes or the like that are being?
That sort of thing, yeah. So in line with the requirement to allow for pods in places where houses have a significant flood risk or have been damaged significantly by flooding.
So with respect to Cabon Council, what's the process that you have to go through at the moment in terms of putting a tiny home on a block or having a van home or the like on a rural property?
Well, you put in a development application to do so.
So all of them require development applications in that? Are they time limited at all? So for instance, with a van home at the moment, what are described as caravan homes and the like, are they required to be moved at any point in time or?
Oh, no, not to my knowledge, yeah.
Thank you. Now, with respect to this issue, and I'll take it from you in a regional community, are you seeing increasing demand for secondary dwellings outside of the Ugara example, of course? But are you seeing increasing demand for secondary dwellings on properties?
Look, I'd have to take that on notice, but no, I don't think so. I certainly haven't seen any obvious increased demand in our area. I think most people who want to move into our area would just buy whatever is available or develop whatever is available. I don't, look, I've seen a few. But generally, these are accepted fairly readily by council. And in fact, in many cases, these don't even come to council. So they're considered by council staff and are accepted fairly readily.
So to the chair's point, a lot of the submissions we've received are in favour of these increases in terms of permissibility taking place. And some are very much citing in terms of the objective to be able to retain the rural characteristics because they are able to keep their families all on one property, not having to have the additional burden and cost of housing and the like and being able to have multi-generational families. Is that something that you acknowledge is potentially desirable when it comes to regional and rural properties?
Absolutely desirable, but this amendment, as suggested, doesn't change anything that already exists. There's already the ability for people to ask for secondary dwellings or do have a granny flat or a pod or something like that in our, certainly in our area. And I suspect it would be the same across the state. It has to be a case-by-case basis. It has to be on a basis that is acceptable to the community, to the local community. There are conventions, if you like, that, well, more than just conventions, that sit within the LEPs. The zonings that exist exist for reasons. In the case of rural zones and particularly minimum lot sizes in a particular area, they're very much based around the level of agricultural productivity that is possible, which is based on the climate and the soils and the access to markets and so on. So in some areas where the productivity is high, you can have smaller lot sizes and still have a reasonable agricultural productivity from a lot. Our council has traditionally, over the years, kept an eye on that, made sure that the intent of the rural zone remains secure, that the whole point of having an RU zone is to provide for agricultural productivity, rural landscape amenity and so on. Because, well, for example, in my area, tourism is a very big industry where we are. It brings in a lot of money to the area, not just agricultural productivity, but the tourism that's based around that. You start to increase the density of housing in those small lot locations, that then has an impact on that visual amenity of the area. It has an impact on roads, infrastructure, and so on. So these are things that are best managed by local councils.
Thank you. Mr. Rawson, thank you for coming to appear today. It's good to have somebody from a, I guess, regional perspective to come and provide some evidence. Just in relation to Cabon, the Shire, what's average time for a development application to be assessed and passed by council?
Currently, at the moment, it's, well, I could look it all up, but we get the, every month, we get the figures. But I think it's down around thirty, forty days, forty days, something like that.
Okay, so we heard in some of the more metropolitan, sort of outer metro areas where this is looking to be rolled out, they were talking about twelve to eighteen months that it would take for an application. In Cabon, it doesn't take that long, is it?
Well, no, and I suspect that it's not because, no, well, certainly not that. I can certainly remember putting in a development application in Sydney. When I was living in Sydney, it took five months. When I moved to the country many years ago, after three weeks, I got a letter from the council apologising for taking so long. So, yeah, in rural areas, in many rural areas, it's not every rural area. Certainly, there will be some where there are certainly a lot more development applications going on. Perhaps it just takes them a little bit longer. But it's really more a function of the number of planets that are available who can process this.
Yeah. You said, just in answer to another one of my colleague's questions, that a lot of the people that you find are moving into your area are likely to just buy or develop their property. So is that effectively suggesting that there isn't a great deal of need for, I guess, the second dwelling rollout in Cabon?
Look, it's not to say there's no need. There is potential need, but it's managed by current controls, by current. Certainly, there are instances where larger properties are being broken up into smaller lots and people are building. We are being asked to agree to some minor modifications there to allow for a slight change in the minimum lot size for that to occur, just for practical reasons.
Yep. So I take it from when you moved, obviously, from Sydney to the area that you put in a development application and you had pretty quick, I guess, turnaround on that. Ms., and I'm sorry.
Burlioz.
Burlioz, thank you. Just in relation to your experience, do you own a property in Sydney that you live in?
Yes.
Okay, and have you had, I guess, an application process for a development at all on your property?
Yes, but it was complying development. It was a renovation. It was just a slight extension.
And how long was that process?
It was very quick.
Very quick, okay. What strikes me, I guess, in relation to this is that we've got two people here that own and live in their own properties. How much contact have you had with people that aren't in a similar financial position to you that are desperate for ability to access, whether it be short or long-term rental accommodations, that might actually be desperate for these sorts of reforms to be rolled out? Have you spoken to people on the ground that are, this isn't something that you, sorry, Mr. Rawson, the handstand doesn't record shaking of the head. So I'm just noting that you're shaking your head. You haven't had feedback from people that perhaps are desperately trying to find rental properties in both of your areas?
I'm sorry, I'm not shaking my head. I was waiting for you to finish your question to answer. Of course, of course, I've spoken to people. I've got children who are in that situation. Children's friends in that situation. I'm a councillor in a shire that has lots of people in that situation. So it's, of course, of course, I have. Have I come across anybody who's desperately wanting a second dwelling on a property? No, not one.
Okay. So in that circumstance then, even if these reforms are rolled out and you haven't met a single person that's desperate for it, nobody's, as you said, knocking down your door, is it really going to have an impact on your area?
Well...
I mean, you're here advocating against it.
Yeah, yeah, I'm advocating against it because I'm here on behalf of the Better Planning Network, which is not my shire. It's, I'm advocating on behalf of all areas of New South Wales where rural zones exist.
And that was a fantastic segue for me to get to my next question, just in relation to the Better Planning Network. Ms. Burlioz, is your organisation, I know you're one of the two people that are indicated on the website as the leadership group, do you have a political affiliation or does your group have political affiliations?
None at all. Well, not that I'm aware of, no. No, I've never had any political affiliation.
Why is it that on the front page of your website, there's a Socialist Alliance sign that's highlighted on the top banner in your group? Socialist Alliance being, you know, socialists effectively.
I have no idea. It was perhaps, I have no idea. I'd have to have a look at the website. But it's probably a photo that was taken at a rally of some sort, but it's not a political...
I mean, it was clearly, there's only, I believe, four or three photos that are actually featured on the front page of your website, one prominently featuring a Socialist Alliance banner. Now, that brings into question, I guess, the NIMBY attitude of your organisation and what it is that you're seeking to shut down here.
No, well, it has nothing, first of all, I have nothing to do with the design of that website.
You're part of the leadership group, are you not?
Yes, so we will look into it now that you've raised it. But I don't accept this NIMBY, YIMBY thing that is, has been propagated by government to divide the community. We're talking about, under the BPN banner, we just wanted, and if you have a look at what the idea was, it came under, it started, BPN started under Part 3A when Part 3A was coming in. And it's just a question of having community involved, community participation in planning, strategic planning, not just sort of blanket dominating things without considering the existing communities, the actual, the actual local planning and overriding LEPs, which have been done in consultation with people and considered local impacts, which I think reflects a bit on, reflects to a certain extent on the RU lands as well. It's this blanket approach where local councils are aware of the constraints within their areas, the needs within their areas. And it's not a question of saying no to everything. It's a question of proper planning and better planning so that we've involved the community, you've considered the needs of the community wherever it is, whether it's rural or metropolitan, and that you respect heritage, environment, and respect the community. And as far as affordability goes, and I come back to the question about, have I met people who have problems? I'm very fortunate that I haven't met many, but I have got a son who can't afford to buy a house. He's renting, but why? Because price houses are going up regardless of the policies and regardless of the thousands of unit developments, the thousands of dual occupancies that are allowed, and all these policies which actually have not dealt with certain issues which are causing the housing affordability problem. So I don't buy into this being divided as YIMBY-NIMBY. I find that offensive. It's a question, and as far as Better Planning Network goes, I've been on it for, I think I've been a member for four years, and the focus has always been on appropriate planning, preserving heritage, environment, and giving consideration to community participation.
And as much as I accept that, what I'm hearing is very much a NIMBY attitude because it seems to me that you're proposing that because you were effectively in an area first, you want to have the rights to, I guess, have an ultimate say about a location and the density or type of development that might be added there because you're there first. You know, and it might impact on your life. You don't want these other things rolled out because it might have an impact on you. But ultimately, you started talking about agricultural land in one of your answers to one of my colleagues previously. What experience do you have in relation to agricultural businesses, agricultural lands, and the management thereof?
Mr. Wang, I'm...
Fang.
Fang, sorry, I beg your pardon. I haven't got my glasses on. With all due respect, I'm not here to argue about YIMBY-NIMBY. I just gave a very general introduction to the fact that this was a blanket approach. And I had read the submissions that have come in, both for and against, and I gave...
You talked about impacting agricultural land. I'm asking you, what experience do you have in relation to this?
Look, thank you for your line of questioning. BPN, as far as I know, well, there are members of BPN who have had political affiliations. Who, well, it doesn't matter. The organisation is apolitical. It's in the name, Better Planning Network. We're not no-planning, we're not for no-development. We are for better development, better understanding of the planning rules so that development is done in an appropriate way. It's not, as Christiana said, it's not YIMBY versus NIMBY. That is just divisive. And, yeah, I take offence to that as well.
Good. I'm glad you take offence to it because I take to offence to somebody from Karingai Council and somebody that says they haven't spoken to people that are going to be impacted by this and hasn't had their door knocked down in relation to these issues.
I said I have done.
Well, you've said that nobody has come to you saying that this is going to be a huge, you know, that this is something that they want in your area. It may be that this is actually appropriate for other areas, and you're both here advocating against it.
No, I'm sorry, you misheard what I said. I said that I have spoken to many people who have concerns about getting access to rental accommodation or a home. I haven't heard of anyone who specifically wants a second dwelling on a property to achieve that aim.
Right, then why are you being a handbrake to those that do?
It's not a handbrake. It's, we have come up with a suggestion where it's absolutely appropriate to relax any sort of restrictions.
So just so long as it's not in your backyard, right?
No, it is in my backyard. Did you not mention the word Ugara, which is...
No, no, you mentioned it. I know all about Ugara. I understand exactly what's occurred there.
There are many places in New South Wales. In fact, a Climate Council report came out only just this last week highlighting that there are 600,000 properties in New South Wales that have a flood risk. A flood risk which is probably, in fact, definitely going to increase.
From rising oceans?
Due to increased storm activity, so inland floods, as well as, yes, rising sea levels and the combination of those, the combination of those effects.
Now, I have enjoyed your contributions, Mr. Fang, but we do need to share it with the government.
Why do you take away my fun chair?
Well, if I had my way, you'd have another fifteen minutes. But we have to be polite. But just before we do hand over to the government, so just remind us, what type of an associate professor are you at Charles Sturt University?
I'm an associate professor. I teach climate change science.
Climate change science, right.
I'm a soil scientist.
Well, Bill Gates has changed its mind on climate change. He says all the apocalypse doom, he said it's all redundant. So that's good news, isn't it? Good news. Anyway, I'd like to hand over to the government.
Chair. And, you know, but sticking, staying strictly with the terms of reference for the committee, my questions will be somewhat different from that of my colleagues, I'm here to say. In terms, so you may not have heard, the previous witness that we had, who gave evidence this morning from Hawkesbury, talked about, and their submission talked about, the suggestion for the committee to also consider changes required for outbuildings and ancillary developments such as sheds, pools, carports, et cetera. The fact that currently, development cannot be approved via complying development pathway where there is more than one dwelling located on a property. I just wondered if you had any thoughts or suggestions around whether, you know, that is something that you would support, having that, you know, basically making it easier for people in regional areas to have access to things like a shed, a pool, or a carport? Yeah.
Look, in certainly my area, some of those are exempt development, so, you know, yeah, so, of course. And so perhaps it's a little different on the urban, on the peri-urban fringe. So this is Hawkesbury, you were just talking about Hawkesbury. A little bit different there because of population size, relatively small area, that sort of thing, and quite restricted areas as well. So I can understand, and this, I guess, comes to my point, that there are going to be significant differences in different LGAs across New South Wales, particularly because of the constraints, you know, it could be just geomorphological constraints, soil constraint, whatever, you know.
Bushfire.
Bushfire risk, that sort of thing. So that's one of the things that they particularly would should have been concerned about.
Given, obviously, you know, your experience, both of you, on local councils and, you know, having registered mission, the view's obviously quite clear that these sorts of decisions are best left with local councils to an extent. Given we're sort of faced with this challenge of respecting the authority and the knowledge contained within local councils and the LEPs, but also, you know, the challenges that we're facing as a state government in terms of housing and some of the impacts that a lack of housing supply is having on our state. You know, the fact that we've got more young people leaving our state at the moment that are staying. What suggestions do you have for us to be able to increase the supply of housing if it is, you know, your stated position of not agreeing with SEPS overriding LEPs? What other suggestions do you have for us?
Okay, well, I mean, I've given a suggestion here about the relaxation of rules in zones that require retreat from flood risk. In that situation, I think that that actually will be quite a large number of properties, in fact, particularly up and down the coastal strip of New South Wales, where there will be areas where it makes sense to allow a landowner to move their dwelling to higher ground on that same block. If it's restricted at the moment because of, you know, you can't have a second dwelling on that lot, then you could take that restriction away and make it a complying development. That would actually be a lot of properties. And so that's one provision. In my area, I don't think this particular member is going to really help that much. I think there are many other mechanisms. You could ask councils to, well, in fact, all councils. Certainly, our council knows and un... You could ask councils to, well, in fact, all councils, certainly our council knows and understands there is a need for more housing in our area. Everybody understands that. And there are many other mechanisms for doing that. We've got strategic plans in place which allow for expansion of zones, and we've, you know, not that long ago have allowed for a re-zoning of land to allow more housing, you know, in our rural zone. So there are mechanisms already in place. They don't need, you don't need a blanket ruling from elsewhere which takes the control away. So you'll end up with, I think as Christiane said earlier, that you end up with, you'll get some very, very perverse outcomes out of a blanket approach via a SEP or from something coming down from the state government, without there being that local understanding.
So did you have anything to add?
Thank you for asking. My simple comment is, without being, living in a rural area, although I've got family who does live in rural areas, well, have a house in a rural area. And the comment I was going to make was simply that when we come back to just a planning issue, there needs to be, I think, closer regard to the objectives of each one of these zones before you adopt a general policy that allows the same thing on all these properties. I mean, you've got to be a little bit more discerning, especially as LEPs do allow secondary dwellings. But I'm just saying, you look at the objectives of your different zones, especially the environmental management and the environmental living areas, which accept secondary dwellings anyway, like, you've got to take that into account and consider that also there are, for the conservation zones, which I'm concerned about in particular, was the fact that under the current government, both state and federal, there is a review of the Environmental Protection Acts, which are actually weakening environmental protection. They're making them much more loose, if you like. So when you're going to start applying that in addition to opening up conservation zones to very flexible regulations that allow increase in development or subdivisions, all right, I think, well, environmentally, that's going to have a very dramatic effect.
In terms of your submission, it also states quite clearly for second dwellings that a secondary dwelling should not be larger than the existing dwelling. Taking that that is your Better Planning Network's position, what would you say to, you know, the situation that I see consistently? I live in a regional area where you've got blocks of land, you know, a three-bedroom, one bathroom, miners' cottage for argument's sake, weatherboard on piers, very small, you know, not regarded as, I suppose, well, it's certainly not compliant with, you know, our current requirements for homes. Why should it be the case that in that situation you can't build a secondary dwelling that would be larger and fit for purpose for, you know, say, a young family to live in? Because a three-bedroom, one-bathroom home is going to be challenging for many families, let alone multi-generational families.
Yeah, look, I think it comes back to being a case-by-case basis. I wouldn't be suggesting that there be a blanket ability to allow that sort of thing coming from a SEP. You know, I just don't think so. It's because I suspect something like that might end up being abused. In that situation, in the situation you've just described, look, I think the local council would be able to make the right call, to make sure that that was done appropriately.
You'd hope so. Unfortunately, it's not always the case that that happens.
But at least they should be given the opportunity.
We're sort of stuck in this situation as well, where on the one hand, yes, we're trying to encourage and get homes built quicker and, you know, but then, and respecting that, you know, as you say, if we put something like that in place at a SEP level, it may well be open to abuse, all right? Which I absolutely take that point. But then, if we leave that with a council, it's fraught with those challenges of it not being, you know, a complying development, not sitting in a simple pathway. Councils are very reluctant to sort of approve anything that may be outside of, you know, there isn't, there isn't a degree of discretion that is always taken, certainly at that, you know, level of approvals in council. If it's not a SEP and, you know, we do leave it with councils, how, is there anything else that we can do to make it easier or kind of signal that this is something that, you know, is okay to do? Because it just doesn't seem to be the case that this is, you know, the common sense as you would, you know, you would sort of think necessarily would prevail.
Look, I mean, to some extent, it does come down to interpretation by council staff, planning staff about this. Some are quite religiously, you know, following the rules, which is perhaps what they should do. But some provide a level of interpretation. There's always a level of interpretation in any of these instruments, as you probably know. So I'm not, I'm very concerned about taking away that ability to make a local call just by having a blanket instrument from above. Because I think it'll throw up too many perverse outcomes, too many bad outcomes. I think the bad outcomes will outweigh the, you know, any potential good ones.
As I recall, in the discussions amongst the committee, including Andrew, there was also a hesitation because it's not specified in the proposal, proposed changes, that if, I understand where you're coming from because I've lived in a 1960s house and, you know, with all the restrictions and et cetera. So I can understand why people would want to do that. But the way it was presented, our interpretation of the way it was presented, was that you keep the older house, you build the bigger house, and then you can demolish the original house and then go in for a house that's bigger than the bigger house that you've just built, you see? It was this kind of, well, what provisions are you bringing in? Where, how far do we go? You've got to define the lot size or the, how many houses per 40 hectares? Is 40 hectares appropriate in every area? Probably not. I know some councils are going for less and they've got reasons to do it. So it's, I come back to just the planning principles, not that I've lived in the regional areas, but the planning principles. It's just that sometimes you need to have some specifics in place, even though you don't like regulations and you want flexibility, just to see what the cumulative impact will be and what the reality is when you put these regulations in place. And that was an example of what we were thinking when we discussed it. We thought, well, okay, you go for the second one, but then what happens to the next one? I don't have the answer, and maybe you've got it, but it was just a comment to raise that possibility.
And, you know, I think also if you're going for the biggest second one, but then demolishing the existing one in a housing crisis, then how does that, like, how does that make any sense? But that's, you know, that's another...
That's happening everywhere.
I know, I know it is.
If the second dwelling was a complying development, then you could demolish the first one and build yet another one. Because you could have two buildings of much larger size on the same lot. That was the problem. You could, you could, it would go on and on and on.
And it might not be a problem in certain situations. I mean, but the point is there's nothing in this regulation that would absolutely limit to anything. I mean, there's nothing. It's just an open slather kind of policy. And I think it needs a little bit more definition and consideration of the individual zones and their objectives and as to whether this policy is really going to respect these objectives. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Thank you, government. So, look, our time has come to an end. Thank you for your evidence. The Secretary will be in contact with you in relation to any questions on notice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you to the committee.
I have your soft words.
Our next witness. So please state your name and position, title, and swear either an oath or an affirmation.
Thank you. My name is Michael Sead. I'm the Assistant Director for Building in New South Wales at the Housing Industry Association. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you. And Mr. Said, would you like to make an opening statement?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for providing the Housing Industry Association with the opportunity to appear before this committee today. HIA is Australia's only national industry association representing the interests of the residential building industry. Our members are involved in delivering more than 170,000 new homes each year through the construction of new housing estates, detached homes, low and medium-density housing developments, apartment buildings, and completing renovations on Australia's 9 million existing homes. Everyone knows we are in the midst of a housing crisis and need to build around 75,000 new homes in New South Wales each year to meet our housing accord targets. Based on current projections, HIA estimates that we are on track to build less than 50,000 per year. This is going to fall very short of the target. HIA is very supportive of the great housing delivery initiatives being progressed by the state government. This includes the Housing Delivery Authority, Transport and Data Development, Patent Books, Low and Mid-Rise Housing Reforms, and in particular, the Planning Systems Reform Bill, which disappointingly has been unnecessarily delayed in the upper house. While these reforms will have a positive impact, it will take time for the full benefits to be realised. They also largely focused on medium-to-high-density housing. If we're going to meet our target, we need more homes of every type, everywhere, for everybody. We must therefore look for opportunities to increase supply in the short term, and this includes in regional and rural areas. Secondary dwellings and dual occupancies is one of those opportunities. They contribute to housing diversity and are an important component of the housing mix. These dwellings utilise existing land and thus can be delivered faster, helping to increase supply whilst also providing more affordable rental accommodation. Since planning rules were relaxed in 2009, we have seen a rapid increase in the number of secondary dwellings built in New South Wales. HIA has previously estimated that on average there could be around 4,320 secondary dwellings approved for construction in New South Wales per year. Making secondary dwellings easy to build in rural areas would only see this number rise further. This will have positive flow and impacts for local communities and businesses, including the construction sector in rural and regional areas. For any reform to be effective, though, they must be supported by a streamlined, compliant development approval pathway. This will ensure certainty, deliver keys indoors faster, and reduce construction costs. Some local government areas already permit secondary dwellings and dual occupancies in rural areas, so we know it can be done well. It is unlikely that additional dwellings on rural land will have an impact on the many primary production or the agricultural capacity of existing rural lands or contribute to fragmentation. Instead, it will likely complement and support these uses. Relaxing restrictions on secondary dwellings, on second dwellings in rural areas more broadly and where they can be constructed can therefore only be a positive step forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like you to elaborate on one of the points you made in your very good submission. I'll just read out that paragraph. "Secondary dwellings in rural areas should be permitted as complying development. The development standards that allow primary dwellings in rural areas to be undertaken as complying development could easily be adapted to also facilitate secondary dwellings in rural areas. Without a suitable complying development pathway, the benefits of reform in this area would be greatly reduced." Could you elaborate on that point, please?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, compliant development is a streamlined pathway. So we've seen for it to work, that certainty provides because there's clear standards that are set, consistent standards across New South Wales, it provides that certainty. So people know exactly what they need to comply with and they provide that certainty. At the moment, without the compliant development pathway, you've got various different councils setting their own individual standards, which undermines the potential forms, makes them more complicated, slows down the process. Compliant development generally approvals are a lot faster, significantly faster than the development application process. They're significantly cheaper. So without those reforms or without making a compliant development, it's unlikely it's going to deliver a significant change because effectively, generally, the development application pathway is much more difficult and doesn't sort of facilitate faster approvals.
And you also mentioned that you say, "In addition to helping with the housing crisis by increasing supply and increasing the value of the asset of the landowner, there's also other secondary benefits around employment in the local building industry." How do you see that could be, like, in the building supply and the demand for tradesmen? How much could you see that being an issue, a positive development in the rural areas?
Anything that's got increased supply and increased amount of construction is going to be a benefit. Obviously, there is, at the moment, we've just come out of a low point in terms of housing. The number of houses were built, so the demand isn't there as much as it has been in previous years. So anything that can increase supply will help provide work and employment for those people, increase the construction industry. Also, if it's through a simplified approval pathway to make it less red tape, it's going to then encourage a lot more people to stay in the industry. We are seeing some builders and some experienced builders leaving the industry because obviously things have gotten too hard and too complex. Making that a lot easier would also encourage a lot of those people also to stay. So it creates work, also creates apprenticeships. So obviously, there's a big positive benefit to the industry in allowing sort of more development in those rural areas and regional areas through things like secondary dwellings and dual occupancies.
And if this reform comes about, I mean, we don't know what the effect will be in the real world. But it could be, it could be a lot of demand to build a second residence. Have we got the manpower? Has your industry got the manpower to provide the tradesmen to get this done? Or would that be something that would be a concern for yours?
I couldn't specifically comment. I don't have any of those figures in terms of trades availability, particularly in sort of rural areas. Look, if there was a significant uplift of demand, there could be those issues, but I don't necessarily think that would be the case. I think the industry would be able to deal with that and adapt to it. I think, I don't think that would be a significant issue in terms of a reason not to do it. I think the industry can, would be able to adapt and pivot to deal or to construct the additional dwellings that might be required as a result of any changes that come into effect.
Okay, that's good to hear. Okay, I'd like to hand over to the opposition.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Sead, for your attendance today and for your submission as well. We just heard from the last witnesses that effectively this can be done already and that the system adequately through councils' LEPs is the right way to navigate this process. What would you say to that?
I don't know if it is happening. Yes, the issue is it's inconsistent. You can have a look. Some councils allow secondary dwellings, some don't. Some allow dual occupancies, but most of them are only if they're attached. So obviously, that creates issues in terms of creating a dual occupancy that's attached on the existing dwelling, structural, fire safety, all those issues. And even the fact that most of the time it's a DA pathway and people just don't want to engage with councils. They want the certainty if there's a compliant development pathway. I think that would also increase the demand. I was looking at, trying to look at the numbers before in terms of the secondary dwellings. From my looking at, just on a secondary dwelling, based on the planning dashboard and the council league tables, for last financial year, this is DA only, so it doesn't include the compliant... development pathway, where a lot of the secondary dwellings would be approved, so regional areas I would assume would be mostly the DA pathway. There was 1,175 secondary dwellings approved under the DA process. If you go to the regional areas, excluding the larger centres like Tweed, Port Macquarie, Coffs Harbour, there was only 137 secondary dwellings lodged last year, in the last financial year.
And your argument would be that there'd be a lot more demand out there for secondary dwellings?
Absolutely. If you made a compliant development, if you open up the pathway to remove requirements for dwellings to be attached, I think that would significantly open up that pathway and encourage that more development, because effectively, it simplifies the construction process, simplifies the approval process, people don't have to go through that whole long DA process, which is an unknown and could take months. Except that the CDC pathway provides that certainty, it delivers faster approvals, saves time, saves money, and would only serve to encourage that development.
Thank you, Mr Said. And despite your answer to the chair previously, one of the things that I hear often in regional communities is the challenge with the labour force in terms of building. To that point, what role do you think that things like modern methods of construction, modular, could play in terms of the secondary dwellings if such changes were made?
I think they could play a role, particularly in the rural and regional areas. A lot of those manufacturers probably are based in those areas, so I think that it could play a role. As I said, I don't see modern method of construction being the golden, or the silver bullet that's going to solve the housing crisis, but I think potentially in those regional and rural areas, and for those secondary type smaller secondary dwellings, I think there's a potential large role where those prefabrication and modular can play a significant role, yes.
And Mr Said, back to that data you originally put to the committee, what do you think is holding, like you've said inconsistency is one of them, people's fear of going through the DA process. What do you think are some of the other things that are holding back applications coming forward for secondary dwellings in rural properties at the moment?
I think, I think it's the, I think, I still think it comes back down to those, those are probably the main issues. It's the inconsistency of the rules, it's the difficulty of those rules in terms of some of those requirements that are set in terms of lot sizes, where it's development control, plan controls, DCP controls, those planning controls make it quite restrictive to develop. I think you just, and people don't sort of then go down that path to consider that type of development. But I think if those rules relaxed, they will remain a lot clearer. We've seen it already in Sydney with granny flats, and how much that has increased since those consistent planning rules were changed in 2009. We've seen a significant increase in the amount of secondary dwellings that have been built, so I don't see any reason why that wouldn't extend into regional areas if similar sort of provisions were applied.
Now, your submission also references the need to balance risk management with development certainty. What are some of the risks that you could see from a policy like this being implemented?
Don't really see significant risk, to be honest. We already allow dwellings in rural areas, we allow attached dual occupancies, we allow secondary dwellings in some cases. I don't really see a significant risk. I said, the demand or the amenity, the size of the dwellings, aren't that significant to a dwelling already. Risks like flooding, bushfire, those sort of controls, we already have planning frameworks in place to manage those risks, so there's no reason why those existing controls wouldn't already be able to deal with any additional risks that a secondary dwelling or a dual occupancy may create. So I don't see any significant risk by allowing, or relaxing of the controls, or making the controls more consistent, to allow increased development in those sort of regional areas. Again, not everyone's going to take it up, which I'm not sure who's going to take it up. So yeah, I don't see a significant risk, and any risk that are there, I'd likely be managed. As I said in my opening statement, I don't think there's issues around fragmentation, I don't see it's going to lose, you're going to lose agricultural land or anything like that. We're not talking a large area in terms of what these dwellings are going to take in terms of size. So yeah, I don't see a significant risk, or significant risk, or if they are, I don't, those risks can be managed, I think, quite easily within existing systems that we've got, within the planning system.
And one last question. One witness today suggested that this programme should have subdivision effectively as part of it as well. Do you think that subdivision is necessary in order to be able to realise this, or do you see problems with subdivision as well?
I don't think subdivision is necessary. Ultimately, there is existing planning controls in terms of subdivision for those existing properties within those LEPs. If the lot size with the secondary dwelling or the dual occupancy meets the minimum lot size that's required for that area, then subdivision would be able to be permitted anyway. I don't think it would change demand greatly, whether that creates more risk around fragmentation and those sort of things potentially, but I don't see necessarily that that's something that has to happen to make it work.
Thank you.
Thanks. Mr Said, just for fairness, I should probably ask, the HIA doesn't have any association with the Socialist Alliance, does it?
Not that I'm aware of.
Good, I'm glad we cleared that up first up. Just in relation to your opening statement, you spoke about the housing targets that we need to reach. Given that the Minns Labor Government has so spectacularly failed to reach their targets so far, do you think that this sort of reform might actually help this poor government on its housing delivery to, I guess, at least try and reach some of the targets that they've been set?
I think, look, I think that the state government is doing some great things, and I did mention it in the opening statement, those things aren't going to happen overnight, we're not going to get a massive increase in uplift over time.
It's been three years now, almost.
I think that those...
You don't have a housing policy.
So I think, so there are reforms in place, and those things are starting to filter through, I think we will start to see some turnaround with those things, with those initiatives. The planning bill, which is currently set in the upper house, I think will have another, more of an impact as well. And then I think anything to do with increasing supply in rural and regional areas, and things like the secondary dwellings or dual occupancy, I think, yeah, absolutely, can contribute to it. It's, again, it's a part of the mix, it's a part of the housing mix, anything we can do to make the construction of those dwellings easier, faster, quicker, more certain, could only help trying to improve in that supply and getting those keys indoors faster.
I noticed you were sitting in the gallery when the previous witnesses were here. Their position on, I guess, the appropriateness and the rigor that needs to be held in relation to planning, I, I think, said was effectively like a handbrake. Do you see the planning system, both, I guess, council level, state level, effectively strangling the rollout of more housing at the moment? Do you think we could be more pragmatic in relation to the way the planning system operates, and would that assist with the rollout of more houses?
Yes, I think more certainty is what we need, and I guess it comes back down to things like compliant development, where it's consistent statewide codes that everyone knows, that it's clear to the councils, clear to certifiers, clear to builders, exactly what they need to meet. I think those sort of certain standards will address some of those issues, in combination with some of the other reforms that are in place. But I think, yeah, those certainties, consistency within LEPs, I think there's some of the major sort of handbrakes that are the issue at the moment, going through the DA process, like I said, even with some of the dual occupancy reforms that have come out, the lot sizes for even in R2 zones are significantly different depending on where you are, so there's no consistency. The reason why things like the compliant development work is to provide that consistency, provide that certainty, things like the secondary dwellings in metropolitan, it was clear, there was the same size, applied across the board, everyone knew it worked, that's why, because that certainty. So providing those clear, certain, and consistent outcomes, and the streamlined approval pathway, where it's, you only need to look at what's, you're not then adding these additional layers of red tape and regulation and assessments in place, which is adding cost, is going to, can only help the system and improve the amount of housing we can build in this state.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chair. Thank you, Government.
Thanks, Chair. Thank you so much for appearing today and your evidence so far. I just wanted to ask you a question around the secondary dwellings, particularly in rural areas, which, you know, as you say, will increase supply, provide more affordable rental accommodation. One of our previous witnesses, first from the tenants' union, and raised some interesting considerations for the committee, I think, in terms of some of the issues that they see at the moment that renters have from, you know, having these secondary dwellings that aren't separately metered, and, you know, issues around electricity pricing and metering, water, and so on and so forth. Do you have any suggestions for how some of those challenges could be addressed whilst also, you know, providing a more affordable pathway, or a CDC pathway as you proposed?
I'd have to, yeah, I'm not sure in terms of those issues, I'm not aware of those issues being raised before. Obviously, we've got secondary dwellings already through the metropolitan area and those things, I haven't heard of those issues being raised before around metering and those sort of things. I think the tendency legislation would cover or deal with a lot of those things already, I would have thought.
Yeah.
But yeah, it's not something I can comment on, I'm not familiar with those sort of issues. I would think, if we're talking rural areas, a lot of it's going to be from a water perspective, probably onsite water anyway. The only potentially main scenario would be electricity. Like I said, sewer and is going to be, probably going to be onsite, water a lot of times probably going to be collected onsite as well. So yeah, it's only probably going to be electricity in terms of that, and I'm not sure if there's any issues with having a second meter from an electricity perspective, I'm not familiar with those sort of requirements. But I don't see that as being a significant issue or nothing that couldn't be resolved without too much change.
Thank you. In your submission, you also provide the example of larger dwelling size limits within rural areas, and, you know, and the approach that's currently being taken under an LEP by the Hills. Why do you think more councils haven't taken up an approach like that, where they, you know, so that the example is that they allow secondary dwellings in rural areas to have an area of 110 square metres or 20% of the total floor area of the principal dwelling, whichever is greater?
Yeah, like I think it's a very mixed bag. Some councils do, some councils don't. I think it's individual council.
Yeah.
I think that's, again, part of the issue, we've got this uncertainty, where you can have one council and the Hills will permit that, but then you go to the next council in Hawkesbury, which could be on one side of the road, at the other side of the road, you can't do it.
Yeah.
So, or it's much more limited. So I think that comes back to that certainty around compliant development, and having a state, consistent statewide code that sets the rules, and yes, it can have limits in terms of areas that might be not appropriate, or restrictions in those sort of areas, but I think ultimately why councils don't do it, I think, it's a difference, obviously, that they're trying to protect the areas, try and maintain what they think they maintain in the many of their areas, in terms of state rural or regional areas, and in terms of what they're trying to protect. But I think if one council can do it, I don't see why the others couldn't do it as well. And as I said, we had talked before, I think, of not having any limit and building a secondary dwelling, or a secondary dwelling building, and a larger one. Again, I don't see an issue why, particularly if you've got a larger lot, if you're on hectares, why would need to be limited to 60, 100, 150 square metres, I'm not sure? Or limit to a proportion of the house size, like I think we've mentioned three bedrooms and a bathroom, if you're unlimited that, then what's the point? I don't sort of share, I think there was some comments before around, you're going to get this scenario of someone knocking down a house, oh sorry, building a secondary dwelling and knocking down an existing one, building a bigger one, and keep doing that. I just don't see that as really a situation that's going to occur. People aren't going to spend their money just to build a house, just to be able to keep building a bigger one. It just doesn't, yeah, I don't see that as being a significant issue. But again, if the lot size is big enough, if we're talking larger lands in rural areas, I don't see the issue why we would need to restrict those dwelling sizes if onsite managed, they've got water supply, they can manage their sewage management onsite, if that's the case, there's no reason to bushfire those sort of things. Yeah, you could build a really big house, why not build two smaller houses potentially?
The other interesting thing in your submission that I wanted to ask you about specifically was, you know, you provide some suggestions for further enhancing the CDC pathway, and you give the case of the council approval for the driveway taking longer than the actual CDC for the dwelling. So what opportunity, you talk about opportunities to eliminate the need for the separate approvals, what suggestions have you got, you know, in regards to that?
Yeah, so obviously, any CDC, whether it's in a rural or regional, it's not just the CDC approval that you need. Generally, you might need to go to get a council to get either a driveway, the onsite stormwater management, even the stormwater system approved by council, so potentially, and those approvals can take longer. So I guess what we're going to see is one house, one approval. If you've got a standard driveway, if you're in a residential area or rural area, you've got, take a greenfield subdivision, you know there's going to be a house there, you know there's going to be a driveway, if we can set clear standards what a driveway has to be, either make it exempt development, so you don't need approval at all, or allow a certifier to approve it as part of the CDC application. Similarly with stormwater, or those sort of things, I think, there's no reason why those things have to need a separate approval from council. So I think either making those requirements either exempt in terms of not needing an approval at all, or allowing the certifier to approve them as part of the CDC application would be a significant step forward, save costs, and also against streamlined approval process because we're simplifying the number of approvals and the time it takes. Because it is, in some cases, that the driveway can take longer than the actual house approval.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much, Mr Said, and we will, the Secretary will be in contact with you in relation to any questions on notice. But thank you for joining us, thank you for your submission. Now, I think we now have a witness via video conferencing.
Oh, yes.
Hello, hello, can you hear us?
Yes, I certainly can.
And you can see us?
I can see you, yes.
Okay, good, we can hear and see you as well, so we're off to a good start. Okay, so can you please state your name and position, title, and swear either an oath or an affirmation?
Absolutely. My name is Kate Albury-Poynter, I'm the Manager of Strategy and Policy at the New South Wales Aboriginal Land Council, and I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Terrific, thank you very much. And would you like to make a short opening statement, please?
Yes, I will, thank you, Chair. Firstly, I'd like to acknowledge country. I'm here dialing in from Bidgegal Land. I'd like to pay my respects to elders past and present, and acknowledge the land in which you guys are all meeting today as well, in New South Wales Parliament on Gaddigal Land. I'd also like to pass on my apologies from Ms Claire McHugh, who's the Chief Executive Officer of the New South Wales Aboriginal Land Council, unfortunately, she was unable to appear today. The New South Wales Aboriginal Land Council welcomes this opportunity to speak to our submission on the inquiry into rural housing and second dwellings reform. As the peak representative body for Aboriginal people in New South Wales, the New South Wales Aboriginal Land Council and the Aboriginal Land Rights Network, which is across New South Wales, is the vehicle for delivering real agricultural and economic outcomes for Aboriginal people here in New South Wales. It's one of the essential structures here for achieving self-determination, and the foundation of that work is, of course, securing safe, affordable, and culturally affordable And the foundation of that work is of course securing safe, affordable and culturally appropriate housing. Across rural and regional New South Wales, Aboriginal communities are experiencing severe housing shortages, overcrowding and homelessness. While those housing shortages are not only for Aboriginal people, they are certainly felt hard by Aboriginal communities. These challenges are compounded by planning controls that restrict Aboriginal land councils from developing housing on their lands in some instances. The proposed reforms to enable second dwelling in rural zones presents an important opportunity to unlock the potential of Aboriginal owned land. Our submission referred to more than 3,600 properties within those zones to deliver culturally responsive housing responses and strengthen community outcomes, of course. Strategic planning reforms such as this proposal will provide Aboriginal landowners with access to development opportunities, to pursue housing and economic aspirations and provide broader community benefits, including things like jobs, growth, sustainable economic progress, strong community connections, et cetera. Reducing regulatory burdens will prevent, will go some way to prevent unnecessary delays and administrative burdens for Aboriginal landowners such as land councils, facilitating more efficient development processes. As well as this, consistency across planning instruments will support Aboriginal term community planning. New York has worked around closing the gap project called Culturally Responsive Design Principles for Aboriginal Housing in New South Wales. And that project's delivering housing differently with the aim of setting a new benchmark for culturally responsive, climate-appropriate, durable housing design and delivery. It is a community-led approach and we're aiming for it to be scalable. The initiative is currently leading four communities, but specifically exploring co-design of large family homes. So we're discussing secondary dwellings are intended to accommodate elders, older children living at home, reflecting specific community feedback about multi-generational housing needs. While the project is focused on new builds, what we can see is that it's an example of community with substantially rurally zoned land. And that would benefit from targeted planning reform, one of these. However, the disclaimer is that the reforms must be done in partnership and must safeguard Aboriginal.
Now, our, our video is declining in its quality, unfortunately.
Protections, ensure Aboriginal.
Do you think this is a glitch or a decision?
Making, and coordinate infrastructure investment.
Now, Kate.
So that's, that's my.
Kate, could I interrupt?
I think she's delayed as well.
I think what we need to do, can you put your, can you put your video? If you could put your video on mute so we can still hear you and we, our IT people think that that will improve the quality of the video we see. It was very, very good, just sort of in the last couple of minutes, it's got more and more scratchy. But anyway, so please proceed now audibly.
We lost her altogether?
Kate, are you there? Have we lost her entirely?
Absolutely.
Okay, good, okay, we can hear you now, can you hear us? Hello Kate?
Okay, you hear, yes, I'm here, can you hear? Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, yes, now we, I think it's getting better, yes, yes. Okay, can you hear us okay?
Okay. I can hear you fine, yes.
Okay, good, okay, well, let Kate proceed from where you were.
Okay, I'm actually, I'm actually not quite sure where we ended up, but what I was, what I will say is, Chair, did you hear anything about the Culturally Responsive Design Principles project that we're running with in Brorona?
No, we didn't, but we're interested to hear about it.
I, I might start from that point because it's.
Thank you.
Probably most relevant for the committee. So the land council, New South Wales Aboriginal Land Council, has work underway through a Closing the Gap funded initiative, Culturally Responsive Design Principles for Aboriginal Housing in New South Wales. What's it called? The project is delivering housing differently with the aim of setting a new benchmark for culturally responsive, climate-appropriate, durable housing design and delivery. It's a community-led approach and we're aiming for it to be scalable. So that initiative is currently being piloted in four communities in New South Wales. And it's specifically exploring the co-design of large family dwellings in Brorona. The secondary dwellings are intended to accommodate elders or older children living at home, reflecting some specific community feedback about multi-generational housing needs. While the project is focused on new builds, what we can see is that it is an example of a community with substantial rurally zoned land that would benefit from targeted planning reforms. However, I think disclaimer is that obviously reforms must be done in partnership and also must safeguard culture and heritage protections and ensure Aboriginal decision-making and coordinate infrastructure investment as well to maximise community benefits. We encourage the committee to view land rights as a public outcome, one that contributes to housing supply, jobs, sustainable regional development, while also upholding Aboriginal cultural and community priorities. Thanks Chair.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Now, we did enjoy your submission and you are one of the most enthusiastic organisations in favour of a reform in this direction. And I'm guessing that you would be speaking, I mean, the Aboriginal community is not always united on some issues, but I'm guessing that there would be no dissent in the Aboriginal community in New South Wales. There'd be no people contacting you saying, no, we don't like this reform, would that be accurate?
You'd be accurate in saying people haven't contacted us to say we don't like this form. I would, I, I certainly can't speak for all land councils across New South Wales and all Aboriginal people, most certainly not. So there may be dissent out there and then, but, but certainly the submission that we wrote is based on the many community consultations we have done in this space and is based on our understanding of the issues and barriers in planning.
Okay, so now you've said the Aboriginal Land Rights Network hold significant rural land holdings across New South Wales, including over 3,690 properties within RU1 to RU46 zonings. Could you just, for the benefit of the committee, could you elaborate on what typically is, well, that's almost, that's three and a half to 4,000 properties. Could you describe what the, the average property is? Like are we talking about a farm or are we talking about just a couple of, like a single house or not? Or what, I mean, I know there'll be a lot of diversity, but what is, could you describe what, what most of those properties would look like?
Yeah, I, I mean, as you alluded to then in your question, it is diverse. There are some larger land holdings that have been returned in that rural space to local Aboriginal land councils through the claim mechanism under the Aboriginal Land Rights Act. And there are some, of course, smaller parcels. I will take it more on notice, that question, because I could probably give you a better breakdown of the diversity and the general kind of size of land in those rural zones that have been returned to us. But it is diverse and what we, but what we can all, all so say is that land that has been returned to us often has certain characteristics. And those characteristics are that they, land that is returned is unused and unneeded crown land. It is the land that, that others through many years since colonisation don't have of use.
Right.
Imagine the, the characteristics of land that has.
Okay. Can you hear us, Kate?
Just being cognisant of.
Fine now, I can, but I didn't hear if there was a further question.
Okay, no, look, I'll hand you over to the questioning from, from the opposition, sorry.
Thank you very much Kate and thank you for your submission and for your opening statement. One of the things that you raised in your submission is certainly something that we're all conscious of as well, is in the term of Aboriginal families and intergenerational living. And how these reforms could be important to being able to foster and promote that. Just interested in your reflections on that when it comes to multi-generational housing on rural properties and how much of a barrier that is at the moment when it comes to Aboriginal families.
Yes, absolutely. We've heard loud and clear about their housing needs. There were some structured community consultations under Closing the Gap since, particularly since 2022, which heard from communities very clearly that different, and that their specific housing types are needed for multi-generational living together. So with things like accessible secondary dwellings for elders, that, that came through on multiple occasions throughout our statewide community consultations. What we also found was that housing doesn't like arrangements appropriately. And the majority of housing in this state has three bedrooms or whatever it is, which for most Aboriginal families isn't enough. So the development of things like second dwellings in rural and regional Aboriginal communities will absolutely support multi-generational living and relieve some of the housing pressures that we've heard over many years through our community engagements. What we also know is that in that secondary dwellings, particularly when you're talking about multiple generations living together or communities being able to live in the way in which, you know, they wish to, so self-determination, is that, that there will, there is the potential for there to be more culturally responsive housing opportunities. And that will go somewhat to reduce the instances of overcrowding and homelessness, which we know is one of the critical closing the gap targets that we are working towards, which is due to be hopefully met by 20 to 31.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for appearing today just in relation to the issues around intergenerational housing issues in Indigenous communities. What is the impact that you would expect additional housing through this process would have for relieving some of those issues for community? Is it something that is viable to roll out in circumstances where I guess there's autonomous control within land councils? Is it something that they can turn their minds to pretty quickly and roll out in, in a fast way?
Thank you for the question. So I think there's just, I guess, two elements to that. The first is the benefits in relieving issues. We know that when there is an appropriate, culturally appropriate housing, that that benefits throughout your social and cultural determinants. So, you know, there are better outcomes for community across health, across education, across all of those social and cultural determinants if there is an appropriate, culturally appropriate, safe and secure house for community members to live in. In terms of the viability to roll out, what, what we see the opportunity with this is that this would provide a pathway that would reduce, you know, planning pathway burdens that we have had in the past. There are parcels of land where land councils have strong aspirations for what they want. Housing is a critical issue for Aboriginal communities. And a lot of the aspirations to do with development of land has to do with, obviously, the need to support community. And one of those critical ways is through adequate, safe and appropriate housing. So there is, you know, if there is the a regulatory pathway that enables it to be more flexible and more streamlined for those second dwellings, you would expect to see an uptake of that being used by local Aboriginal land councils with the land that's been returned to them.
Thank you Chair.
I'd like to ask the Government.
No, don't have any questions at this stage, it's really challenging to hear the responses. So I just think, you know, I'm happy with mine on notice, given some of the issues we're having with the tech, yeah.
Okay, well, look, Miss Audbury-Poynter, we might end it there, but we very much enjoyed your submission and your, and your presentation today, so thank you very much. And did we take anything, we haven't taken, I think we did, there was one on notice, yes. So the secretary will contact you in relation to any questions on notice.
Thank you Chair and apologies for the audio issues.
Not at all.
That's all good, we got the message, we got the good message. Good oil.
Thank you very much.
Well, look, thanks everyone, so that means we get a little bit of a early mark for lunch and we'll see you all back here at two o'clock.
Very good.
Is that sugar free?
I didn't steal it from you.
Okay, oh, excuse me.
They've changed the cans, yeah.
Okay, okay, order, order. Welcome back to the inquiry into rural housing and second dwelling reform. Now, we have, we're joined with, we're joined by two witnesses here. Could you please each state your name and position title and swear either an oath or affirmation?
My name is Rebecca Reed, I'm Vice President of New South Wales Farmers and I'm on a farm. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I'm Rhiannon Heath and I'm an environmental policy adviser at New South Wales Farmers. I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much, and are you willing to make a short opening statement?
I'm willing to make one.
Thank you.
Okay, so thank you for the opportunity to speak today on behalf of New South Wales Farmers. Across much of the state, the lack of suitable housing limits agricultural productivity and community wellbeing. Farmers struggle to house workers, families face difficulty planning succession, and essential workers like teachers, nurses, police find they have nowhere to live in our communities. The main issue is that our planning system hasn't kept pace with rural needs. The housing SEP 2021 and code SEP 2008 were mainly designed for suburban areas. Their rigid and inconsistent application across councils has created confusion, making simple tasks like building a home for a family member or workers frustrating and costly. Members often report spending hundreds of thousand dollars on houses in town for parents or employees when a simple on-farm dwelling would be more affordable, practical, and beneficial to the community. Others have lost skilled workers as there's no local accommodation. Allowing more dwelling on farms is a straightforward, low-risk, high-impact reform that can have immediate benefits. Current planning rules are too metro-focused and inconsistent. What's needed is a uniform, statewide-based framework that permits second dwellings and possibly third as complying developments on rural zoning and conservation C3 and C4 lands without requiring subdivision. Local discretion should be limited to genuinely environmental and safety issues, not bureaucratic preferences. Reform is about enabling families to stay on-farm, maintaining community continuity, and supporting those who underpin regional Australia. It's not about speculative development. So, we encourage the committee to recommend a consistent statewide provisions that make second and even third dwellings a practical solution for farmers across New South Wales. Thank you.
Okay, Miss Heath, did you have an opening statement?
Ah, no.
Okay. Okay, so my first question is that your submission points out that across much of regional New South Wales, quote, "housing availability has become one of the most pressing constraints on both community wellbeing and agricultural productivity," end quote. Would you agree that enabling a second dwelling on rural land therefore supports not just housing supply but also the capacity of farming operations to retain key personnel, family successors, and seasonal workers?
Yes, absolutely, and there's no doubt that the regional community is tight. If you look at my town of Moray, vacancy is 1.08%, Walgood is 0.02%, Kempsey on the coast is 0.73%. All these are making an extremely tight market which is affecting our ability in our community to get things like ambulance workers and nurses. But if you go to the farm, on our own farm, we need accommodation just to attract workers, and that includes family workers as well as single workers. Just having someone on our farm also helps deter theft on our place, which is becoming an increasing issue. We need our workers to be close to the place of work. If you live an hour west of town and you're expecting your employee to go out there into the sun all every day and often at night because nighttime work when we're harvesting or when you're a dairy and you're milking three times a day, it is just dangerous and they need to live on-farm. And we often don't have enough accommodation on-farm because of, it's very difficult to get, to build on-farm accommodation for these workers. We need people on-farm for immediate assistance if there's an accident, for animal welfare, just to allow ourselves as farmers to be able to go away and have someone on the farm to look after the farm in case of fire or making sure our animals are properly watered. We also, it's much more affordable for farmers usually to be able to build rather than have to buy a house in town with land or buy separate land. We can build on that farm to accommodate the workers that we need, the contractors that we need, the shearers, or our own family members for succession planning. So, all of these go into the viability, the productivity, and just the running of our farm. It becomes essential to have on-farm accommodation.
So, what's the name of the councillor? Is it the Moray Plainshire Council?
Correct.
Okay, so what's the situation? So, there's, I used to work at Colorado Rice, so I know there's a lot, a lot of land out there, a lot of vacant land. But you're saying that in both Walgood and Moray, there's very, very tight rental markets?
Solar panels.
Yes, very, very tight rental markets. So, what is the situation now if a, what is, is the Moray Plainshire Council friendly towards second development at the moment? I mean, if someone puts in an application, is it, is it too difficult or are they somewhat friendly towards it?
I'm going to talk in general because I've been speaking, because I'm representing my members, so not just Moray council. The problem we're finding is there's a lot of inconsistency across the state on how the, how the councils are actually interpreting those state frameworks and how they're actually applying them. And some councils are more bureaucratic than others, they have different interpretations on what you can build versus what you can't build, the requirements, and it makes it really difficult between regions to actually interpret what needs to be actually done. And for instance, I'll give you two examples of, one where a family, the sibling moved on to the farm, he took over the family place. The other sibling meanwhile was living just in a ordinary bachelor pad. That sibling then married, that sibling then had obviously started to have children and wanted his own family house as well. And he was told that, yes, you can build your second house, but you have to knock down the little cottage, which would have been perfect whether they had shearers accommodation or, you know, contractors. So, that just seemed, you know, it wasn't practical in what they'd been asked to do. Another, another family was saying that they had, took them 18 months to get approval to build a family house because they were being, they had to spend tens of thousand dollars proving that the floodplain surveys, because they were building on a hill, floodplain surveys and the koala maps, and this land was cleared, was actually incorrect. So, 18 months later and tens of thousands of dollars later, they got their approval, but the process by which they had to do it was very difficult. And we have multiple stories down the coast of people just throwing up their hands, and if they, and if you're a dairy or a horticultural operation, you have to have accommodation. And the tens of thousands that they're having to spend and the difficulty they're having to go through and the hoops they're having to jump to means they're not able to get these things built. And that is not good for the productivity of the farm, their ability to attract workers, and just their ability to operate.
We had some witnesses in here earlier today who were against these reforms, and one, and one of their complaint, their concerns was that they thought that a second residence would diminish the agricultural productivity of the land now.
You took my question.
That seems, that seems absurd to me since it would be a very small footprint, but I would be keen to hear your thoughts on that issue.
I can't see one possible reason how that would diminish productivity, to have your work, not have your workers on farm. We need our workers on farm whether it's because of the late nights that we work during harvest, whether you're a dairy, milking at 10 o'clock at night and 4am in the morning. We don't want our employees on the road in dangerous conditions. If something goes wrong, if there's a mechanical breakdown in the middle of harvest, these things are essential to have people on-site, and our employees don't want to be travelling, say, an hour each day to and from. They want to be on-site, they want to have that lifestyle. We have one family who works for us, they've come over from the coast, they've brought two children, they've brought, and his wife who happens to be a dental nurse, so she brings a skill to town that we actually need. And they all want to live on-farm, and from our point of view, it is so much more productive having them there because they're not having the travel time and the safety issues. Plus, we've got someone there to look after the place which allows us to actually go away and have a holiday from time to time. So, in so many ways, I see no negatives with these people living on farm and the workers. And if we don't have accommodation, if you're a hort or dairy, you will not attract people to your farm to work.
Thank you very much. I'd like to invite the opposition to ask questions.
Thank you very much. Similarly to that point and some of the arguments that have been put today against this, one was that there really isn't much demand for it. From your perspective, what sort of demand do you think there is for secondary dwellings
When you look at the intensive nature of the industries and how a lot of our industries are heading down intensive line, you've got to, I was already spoken about dairies and horticulture, because I was speaking to farmers from both those areas yesterday, who said, if we do not have accommodation, very simply put, we cannot get workers. It's, it's that simple. So we will not have a milk, we will not be drinking milk, we will not be eating a lot of our fruit and veg unless we do have this on-farm accommodation. Then you go more probably west of, to where we are, our workers want to be on-farm, and we've got so much pressure on housing in town, let alone getting in a good area of town, that we, the workers actually want to live outside of town. Now, on my own farm, we're lucky, we've got several houses on different blocks, which allows us, but the story I told of people wanting to come home, if my son comes home, and I have two sons, if they come home, I don't have housing for them. So where do I put them? Um, you know, in a situation where we had one family where sibling was, one brother was already in the main house, and we had to build, they had to build for the other house, there's a definite demand as, as farms to maintain that family succession planning, you really need that ability to build a second home, because there might only be one main homestead, and that's not going to house a whole family. So there is a definite demand for casual workers, definite demand for just your general workers, you know, whether that's a family-sized home or just a bachelor pad, and then we had, do have the succession where you're wanting to make sure, in my, I can tell you in the next few years, I will have three generations of people on my farm, and we all need to be housed, and they potentially will all have families.
One of the other arguments that's been put is that in order for this to work, there needs to be subdivision that occurs. Now, from that example you've given in terms of your family coming home, I see that there are some challenges with subdivision being a requirement, because it is a changing nature of lifestyle. You might have, at one time, workers come in, but at another time, you might have your own family coming in and, and being part of that succession planning. Just interested in your perspectives with respect to subdivision and whether it actually could be more harm than good in this example.
In general terms, we would argue against subdivision. When you create subdivision, you're essentially scattering what might be lifestyle blocks in amongst primary production. So we're really talking about housing here, which is not subdivided, because as long as subdivision and you have, and then eventually down that track that might become a lifestyle block, you create conflict with people living next to ag, not within ag. So we're not suggesting by any stretch of the imagination that you actually subdivide. In fact, we think that is a real negative to this if you start subdividing, just say, oh, we want to build another house, well, you have to subdivide it. We believe, we're talking about housing that is built for workers, for contractors, for rural, for family succession planning purposes, that are working within the business or associated with the business. Now, that's not to say at times it might not be rented if there's a drought, but the fact of the matter is, we, we believe subdivision is going to create a, some of the problems of mixing your primary production with lifestyle blocks, which is what, not what we're proposing on the land here. Do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I think that's a really key factor in these rules being fit for purpose, and we do understand the anxieties of some of our members in more peri-urban areas, dairy farmers, horticulture farmers, and they might be opposed to some of these reforms because of that perception that it's going to increase right-to-farm issues. But, so I think that's really key, that any of these reforms don't mean that subdivision is required, because that means family farms continue to operate without that, that anxiety.
Thank you. And the last question from me, Mrs. Reardon. With respect to, to some of these changes being put forward, just interested in terms of what the experience is of your members at present under the current arrangements, what are they doing? Are they just finding it too difficult and giving up, or are there workarounds that have sort of been picked up by some of your members potentially?
Um, look, basically, it's costing them tens of thousands of dollars and unnecessary, and at the moment, we have a viability issue with a lot of our farmers. You look what's happening in the dairies and how they're, you know, starting to close down, well, they have been closing down since the year 2000 since deregulation. So anything that improves the viability of our farms, I think, is, is a good thing. So I think, so obviously question, your question related to...
Just in terms of the current arrangements?
Current arrangement.
What, what people are doing effectively? Are they getting around it? Are they giving up? Are they taking on a huge burden of cost as you sort of outlined there?
I say, when you put bureaucratic, bureaucratic, unjustified, non-succile rules in front of people that are creating barriers to actually getting on and being a productive farm, you're going to find that people go with workarounds. So we need to work with the system, create a system that is actually friendly, and doing things like creating pathways of exempt pathways for development and complying development pathways as opposed to the development applications, which are, you know, very bureaucratic. They're not flexible, they're not look, a lot of the rules unfortunately are not saying, oh, you can only build it as a certain percentage size of the primary residence. Well, it needs to be fit for purpose. If it needs to be a family home, it needs to be a family home for succession planning. If it needs to be a bachelor pad, if it needs to be accommodation that can house our contractors, it shouldn't be one-size-fits-all, it actually doesn't. And we, you know, we need to create environment where farmers don't feel they have to go around the current system.
Thanks, Mrs. Reardon.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming and appearing today. I really appreciate the evidence you've given, it's been very concise and clear. To that point, the Chair indicated that we had some previous witnesses providing us some evidence. We had a boomer nimbie from the North Shore try and tell us that these reforms may impact agricultural land. Now, you've made it pretty clear that that's not the case. How do you feel about people from the North Shore, from metropolitan areas, telling us about how we're impacted on our land, on the farming land, that they've never stepped foot on?
Um...
I've thrown the ball, feel free to have a swing.
You have. How do I say this delicately?
Don't, I know, but just, you've got parliamentary privilege, go hard.
Uh, these people have never stepped foot on a farm. You know, farmers get a lot of things thrown at them. You know, you're not environmentally friendly, you're cruel to animals. In fact, we love our animals, we are stewards of the land. When I work my land, I work my land for the next 100, 200 years for my children, my children's children to take over. So to be told that I have to do something like regenerative farming, when I already do regenerative farming, I'm already looking at my land for the next 100 years, to tell me we knocked down trees, when in fact, on our farm, we've planted more trees than we've ever knocked down, and we whole strips of trees planted. So, yeah, it is, it is really insulting to have that thrown at us as farmers, because we are here, you know, trying to produce food in love with our land, in love with our animals, and we have no intention generally of going anywhere. We are looking at generations of farmers on my own family farm and on the farm I grew up on, and we intend to keep it that way and plan to have generations after that, and which is why we don't want to see, for example, subdivisions left, right, and centre. We want to maintain primary production, that is what we love doing.
Hmm. Miss Heath, do you want to have a crack?
Um, yeah, I, I mean, I think the, the stories from our members, the statistics are really clear, that there is a need. Housing demand in rural communities is extremely severe, and we have heard stories about nurses not being able to find homes, policemen, so it's, however they feel, it's the, it's clear that there is a need.
Yeah.
One of the other points they tried to make was that these reforms could affect the heritage. Can you consider that there are any heritage issues that you might see in relation to this?
I live in a house that's 110 years old. There is no way that we are going to destroy that house. That house is part of our property, that house is valued, we spent a lot of money on that house maintaining it. As you can imagine, it does require a lot of maintenance. We are not talking about knocking down those sort of houses. We actually love, as, as, it's, it's part of our farms, it's part of our heritage, and we will always protect that. So I'm actually surprised to hear anyone say that.
Okay. So do you think it's fair then to suggest that maybe they should just stick to their chai lattes and their chardonnay and keep their opinions to themselves?
I don't know how I'm going to go back to the North Shore after this.
I try and stay away from that as much as possible.
They have a point of view, they have a point of view, we just disagree with that point of view, because we're out there living on this country and looking after this country.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chair. Thank you very much, you both, for appearing today. It's lovely to see you again. Thank you for travelling to be here in person. In terms of your submission, I was interested in how we might improve the current definitions of rural workers dwellings, which are said to be currently too restrictive, if you've got thoughts about that.
Oh, yeah, sure, so, um, that's a really critical point about making these rules more, more fit for purpose, is the secondary dwellings, and although we know the SCPs are sort of up for interpretation by the councils, they need to be considered and those definitions need to be more clearly defined in, in the rules. So, yeah, and, you know, we, we were talking about things like exempt dwellings for, you know, small, tiny, you know, what do you call them? What do you call them? Demountables sort of things?
Dongas.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, there's lots of things to consider, you know, you're not building granny flats all the time, so, yeah.
Um, the other interesting suggestion I think in, I found in your submission was around the legislative reforms you suggested to require project proponents to make investments, local investments in housing and infrastructure. Now, I think that, there's an argument there that, that councils currently have the capacity to negotiate that through voluntary planning agreements, but is it, is it the case that you think there should be requirements, whether it's in a SEP or otherwise, so that we can better reinforce that in local areas? Is it not currently being done, or?
No, it's, it's very much up to private negotiations between these developers and local councils a lot of the time. This is something that our members have raised at past annual conferences, they, there's a lot of large-scale developments, whether it's renewables, mining, transmission line construction going on in regional communities, and they are creating a lot of this really intense demand for housing in regional communities. So this needs to be a considerable part of the thought process in regional areas.
It's interesting, because I, it's, I can see a consistent theme emerging with, with the evidence that we've received so far today, I'm not sure whether my colleagues would share this view, but that, you know, on the one hand, there is an acknowledged need for additional housing, the need for flexibility, but on the other hand, you know, to an extent that already exists through, you know, councils' abilities and their, and it's referencing your submission, the, the kind of nuanced interpretation that some imply, some apply, whereas, you know, the really rigid interpretation that others might sort of apply to, you know, whatever their local environmental plans are. In terms of the role of the state government, short of a SEP, is there anything else that you see, see we could be doing to, to assist local councils to be more supportive of, you know, farmers in what, what I see is obviously a very important industry, not only for us here in New South Wales, but, but for, obviously for the country? And your arguments largely stand up.
Yeah.
In my mind.
I think, I think, you know, the current instruments provide a lot of flexibility for how they're interpreted by the councils, they're providing a framework, but there's a lot of interpretation there. And I think what we need is a lot more flexibility in what we can do in terms of, you know, whether we're able to build, where we're able to build on the place, because there's, you know, you might want to place it over near where there is an issue, where, you know, you have other infrastructure to try and to surf it. You shouldn't have to put it right next to your current primary house, you might, it's got to be flexibility on the size that you've actually got, that you can build of that house to make it fit for purpose, whether it's for workers, whether it's for, you know, your succession planning, whether it's for your bachelor worker, whether it's for your family that you want to bring out from the coast. So it's really important, I think, to have that flexibility, but then we can allow the flexibility and interpretation of the councils, where they're all interpreting that so differently.
Yeah.
And then applying their own bureaucratic barriers and their own theological views over how that should be interpreted, because we have such a different interpretation in between the coasts and out, the western areas, and even within those coastal councils. So you, on one hand, you need flexibility to say one size does not fit all, but on the other hand too, we need to ensure that the interpretation and how it's applied is not nearly so flexible and inconsistent, and actually is reflected in the flexibility and the, the needs that we actually need to be able to, to do and build our accommodation needs on the farm, which has the added benefit of also helping the social, the town. As I said, I have a family in town, she's a dental nurse, that's fantastic, we need dental nurses.
Yeah, and so it's fair to say, I think, that New South Wales Farmers are supportive of kind of getting rid of this notion that the secondary dwelling needs to be attached, but also in your submission it references, you know, the lot and having it to be built on the same lot, so whether that could be...
Yeah. So this, it's not, we don't want a secondary dwelling within the definition of granny flat. We want to be able to say we might need to build a second dwelling, even a third dwelling. Like, why if you have two siblings come home and they build a second family house, would you go and knock down a perfectly good piece of accommodation?
I know, I agree.
That could then turn around and be used for when you have shearers, contractors. At our place at the moment, we have, we have people here, we're in the middle of harvest, and we have contractors, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven people staying on our place at the moment, and we are harvesting till 2 o'clock at night. Now, I don't want them driving back into town, because that is just dangerous, because then they're up early in the morning, they're tired and, you know, fatigued. So if there's a whole lot of social as well as, uh, just productivity reasons for actually doing this and applying it correctly, and, and cutting the bureaucratic red tape around it, and, yeah.
Okay, thank you, thanks, Chair.
Thank you very much. Okay, well, thank you very much for that evidence. I don't think we took anything unnoticed, but if we did, then the Secretary will get in contact with you.
Yeah, the only thing I would add is, you know, and I've probably mentioned it, is we have development applications, which can be very long. As I said, one, you know, one example I gave was 18 months, tens of thousands of dollars to prove that two maps were actually incorrect, and they have now built that home. But we need to look at things like exempt pathways and complying development pathways, you know, fit for purpose, to try and get the productivity and ensure that we, you know, our farms remain viable.
Terrific. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're joined by various representatives of some local councils, which we're very happy to have here. So could, starting from my left, could you please state your name, position, title, and swear either an oath or affirmation?
Good afternoon. My name is Catherine Vickery, I'm the Acting Director of the Planning and Compliance Division at Hornsbyshire Council, and I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
My name is Taylor Richardson, I'm the Team Leader, Strategic Land Use Planning at Hornsbyshire Council. I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
My name is Claire Aslanis, I am Team Leader in Strategic Planning at Camden Council. I solemnly, and sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. I solemnly and sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
My name is Josh Carnell. I'm the manager of Strategic Planning at Camden Council also. And I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
And Ed Patterson, I'm the director of Strategies and Communities at Kiama Council. And I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. Now, you're all, you're all welcome to make an opening statement. You don't have to, but most people today have. So you're welcome if you'd like to get something off your chest at the beginning.
I'll take you up on that if that's okay. So thank you for the opportunity to address the committee. As you would have read in our submission, Hornsby Council is part of the Greater Sydney region. So it is assumed that we are actually excluded as per the terms of reference. However, the terms of reference also refer to the document entitled State Environmental Planning Policy Housing Amendment, Second Dwellings in Rural Zones, which as drafted, applies to all LEPs in New South Wales. Council's submission to this inquiry focuses on how we manage rural lands and the impacts the reforms would have if they did apply to us as part of Greater Sydney. Our LGA has an area of approximately 460 square kilometres, of which almost seventy percent is characterised by bushland comprising national parks, major waterways, natural reserves and rural landscapes. Of the remaining land, ten percent is zoned and used for urban purposes, fifteen percent is used for rural purposes and five percent is for open space. Hornsby Shire's variety of landscapes and landform is unique within Greater Sydney, but is also very different from outer metro LGAs, which we acknowledge. And we respect that our experience may not be transferable to outer metro rural LGAs. Council's position is that statewide planning approaches are problematic due to the differences between the council areas. Hornsby Council has an adopted rural land study, which is a place-based study prepared in consultation with our community. And it sets out the key principles and recommendations for planning in our rural areas. And our study identifies that additional housing in our rural areas should be to support the vitality of those rural areas. But it's not for housing supply or to meet targets. Council allows attached dual occupancies, secondary dwellings and rural workers dwellings in our rural zones, but not in conservation zones. The C3 environmental management and C4 environmental living zones in Hornsby Shire typically apply to steep land or flood plains or native vegetation and are generally bushfire prone. A statewide approach would not consider such local place-based planning. In terms of the tools available to local councils for planning for housing in rural areas, councils are already able to permit secondary dwellings and dual occupancies in rural zones, such as we have, to locally respond to housing needs and zone objectives. There are also provisions in LEPs through the standard instrument to identify the size of secondary dwellings and to be able to balance the opportunity for additional dwellings in rural areas. Proposals for dual occupancies, secondary dwellings and rural workers dwellings are permitted with a development application in our Shire and a merit assessment which considers flooding, bushfire and evacuation, onsite storage management and land use conflicts. More details of our approach to managing rural land are outlined in our submission and we would welcome the opportunity to clarify any points.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other opening statements?
Yeah, I'd like to say something.
Thank you.
So, yeah, as mentioned, it's not clear by the definition of outer metropolitan council that Camden is or isn't included within the model instrument. But my statement will be under the assumption that it is, given that it kind of does fall within that fringe. So Camden Council is one of the fastest growing LGAs in the country with its population expected to grow by eighty-one percent by twenty forty-six. The Greater Sydney Commission has set dwelling targets of ten thousand to twelve and a half thousand dwellings for the period between twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-five, twenty-six, with the majority of these being detached dwellings. These numbers are already achievable without spilling into our rural areas, given the number of large scale precincts that we already have that have come online, as well as many that have yet to be finalised. This has only been able to occur through meticulous strategic planning, where we have carefully considered what is achievable and how. That includes consideration of Camden's heritage and cultural values, environmental sustainability and biodiversity and supporting infrastructure and community views. With all of these things considered, we have established our local strategic plans, being our local strategic planning statement, rural land strategy and local housing strategy. Broadly, the sum of these, of the objectives within those documents is to keep growth within our growth areas and to protect our rural areas from urban development. We also have a very passionate and vocal community that have consistently expressed the importance of the rural character to the historic feel of our area. Camden boasts a rich, and, sorry, a rich heritage with evidence of European settlement dating back to the early eighteen hundred and includes large areas of cow pastures and farmland. Camden's local planning controls already do allow for dual occupancies, attached dual occupancies and secondary dwellings, subject to a number of standards and planning controls. The draft model instrument does not reflect the needs of the Camden LGA and it poses potential for land use conflicts that are considered by our strategy. And it doesn't allow for adequate opportunity for assessment of flooding, bushfire, biodiversity and native vegetation, our rural villages or heritage. Camden Council uses the metropolitan rural area as a very useful tool in creating a clear delineation between urban and rural lands to ensure that the spillage of urban areas is minimised. While we still, sorry, while we strive to achieve increase in housing supply and diversity, we believe that local planning will produce better planning outcomes for our community. Camden's done the work and has sufficient capacity to support housing growth with, without additional planning pathways for second dwellings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have a prepared statement, but I will just say for the benefit of the committee, Kiama is out, is different to the other councils being represented here in that we're not part of the Greater Sydney region. We are part of, while it exists still in statute, a member of the six cities region. But as I understand the terms of reference, these provisions would solely affect us. We are very supportive of supporting our rural property owners whilst they preserve the agricultural landscape and continue to be viable agricultural land. We too, as been provided evidence here, permit secondary dwellings and other forms of residential accommodation within our rural zones. So there's some of the commentary in the terms of reference and the draft SEP that's been flagged that we already do. I think there could be some additional complying pathways. I think we put in our submission that at present only rural dwellings in the RU1 zone can be done as complying. This could be considered scope for additional zones, but apart from that, happy to be here and provide evidence to the committee.
Thank you. Okay, well, look, my first question is the same question to Kiama, Camden and Hornsby. You've all said that you do currently, under the current rules, permit the construction of a second dwelling. Can I ask, how often is that happening and what is, what is the processing time if somebody contacts the council and says, I'd like to build a second dwelling? What's the typical timeframe that they'd be facing?
So Hornsby allows secondary dwellings, dual occupancies attached and also rural workers dwellings. They are a merit assessment, so I can only say that the statistics that we've got, given the benchmarking frameworks from, from the state government recently, is that our assessment processing time on average is eighty-four days. So that's roughly how long it would take them once they've lodged a development application with us.
Eight days.
Eighty-four days. Yeah, that's, that's our average processing time. Yeah.
And how often is it happening in Hornsby?
We did have a look, we did run a report this morning. I can take on notice and give you the report. But it looks like on average over the last five years, we've approved about seventy additional dwellings of some form in our rural areas. Whether that be a secondary dwelling, a dual occupancy or a rural workers dwelling. But I'd like to take that on notice and.
And sorry, was that on average per year or average over the five years?
Over the five years, about seventy.
Seventy over five years. Okay. Okay, how's it going in Camden?
So, like I said, all of our rural zones do allow for attached dwelling, sorry, attached dual occupancies and secondary dwellings. We don't get a huge number of those development applications come through. I think it's been two in the last twelve months, but I would take that on notice and give you some, some hard figures.
These are low numbers, since you did both say in your opening statement, you went out of your way to say, oh, we're already permitting it. But we should have also mentioned that we're barely doing it. How are we going in Kiama?
So we too permit secondary dwellings in our, both of our rural zones. I can take on notice the exact number that we approve, given our idyllic sort of outlook. The number of secondary dwellings and the applications coming in are largely for tourism offerings in rural properties. Given the outlook they have, both of our rolling green hills, ArasGartman and our coastal outlooks, so they're less to do with agriculture, more to do with scenic and tourism opportunities. Our current averaging processing times are at about seventy-four days. We saw an up spike in applications coming in for rural secondary dwellings when the state government introduced model provisions around the size and the setbacks to principal dwellings. A lot of people were trying to get their applications in prior to, but I would imagine on average it's about ten applications come in per year.
Okay, thank you. Now, we've had a lot of submissions just from, from private citizens. Only one out of all of them was opposed to this. The rest of them were very much enthusiastically in favour of it. Today, we've heard from the farmers, very enthusiastic about it, very passionate about it. They said this is desperately needed. Aboriginal groups have come in and said, yes, they were passionately in favour of this reform as well. The tenants' union, the building industry. Now, this is a very, very diverse group of people. Now, we did receive, we had one group in this morning, in my view, a radically anti-development group, masquerading as a, as a planning group. But besides them, the only organisations that are opposed to this are the local councils. Now, why do you think that is?
So per my opening statement, I do believe that local planning will get better outcomes for, for our local government area.
Okay, anybody else want to contribute?
I think from Kiama's point of view, it's worth clarifying that we're not opposed to the reforms. I think we see that most of the objectives contained in the draft SEP we are already doing. I think in our submission, we said there's some ambiguity in the term second dwelling. The legislation already has a definition around secondary dwelling and it certainly has a definition around rural workers dwelling. I know the previous speakers gave evidence that those definitions needed to be more flexible. I'd be interested around exactly what that meant because I read them as being quite open and flexible. And if an application comes in for secondary dwelling or rural workers dwelling, it's generally approved. As the committee would well be aware, when something becomes complying or exempt, it's actually less flexible than it is with a development application. There are rigid controls that you must abide by in order to be complying. So I wouldn't characterise council's submission from Kiama as being opposed to the proposed framework.
Well, you wanted to retain local control, from what I recall. You didn't, you didn't want the state government to step in and make it much easier to build a second residence.
If I recall correctly, our submission is more around the fact that both the state and the local provisions already do that.
Yeah, but you've just said that it's barely happening in Kiama. Now, I think if we, if we brought in this reform, I suspect you'd be surprised at how much demand there would be. I think there's many reasons why, you mentioned that tourism, there's lots, lots of different reasons why people would want a, a second residence. Now, this parliament does have to wrestle with a little thing called the housing crisis, which is causing an enormous amount of angst across, across, across this entire state, across this country. And it really is appalling. Sydney has the second highest property prices in the world behind Hong Kong. There's a big difference between, Hong Kong's tiny, New South Wales is massive. So there is, a lot of people say this is the biggest challenge facing this state. This parliament seems to have a bit of a bipartisan agreement that we've got to, we've got to do something. And I think there's also a sort of a bipartisan consensus that the biggest stumbling block, one of the biggest causes of the housing crisis is local governments. Is that, is that a correct impression or a false impression?
I think I'll answer that by saying, I can clarify Hornsby's submission, we said we don't support a statewide approach, partly because, yes, we are doing it and we do want local control. I think the issues that we had or that we've pointed out in our submission, if it were to apply to Greater Sydney, is the conservation zones, the permissibility in those zones. And also there's the title arrangement, so where it was unclear about subdivision, whether that would or would not be supported. Because we, we do support second dwellings on our rural lands. We do think it is vital for the vitality of those.
I think you said, you missed.
But I guess we, we can't put those development applications in for people. So that's the take-up based on it being permitted in all of our rural zones. So we don't say, you know, we can't force people to ask for that secondary dwelling.
Well, I think the word would have gotten around, landowners, they would have said, it's just way too much of a complicated mess, don't even worry about it. Now, if this reform comes in, I think the word will get around. It's a much, there's a nice, simple pathway to build a second residence.
Yeah.
And I think, I think, and for some, what I can't work out is why are the councils opposed to that?
I think it's more, as I said, the, the conservation zones is what council would be reluctant to have overruled by a state policy allowing it in conservation zones. I think it's the, the title arrangement, so we wouldn't support subdivision.
I think that's a straw man about the conservation zones.
Yeah, there's no, there's no talk of.
Environmental management, environmental living zones, the E3 and E4 zones. Yeah.
Say through and say.
Yeah.
I will think, we'll, we'll, I'm sure we'll.
So that, that would be our concern. And then just the complying development pathway, we have just pointed out that our merit assessments are based on onsite storage management, so making sure there is enough room for that. We do a bushfire assessment. So if complying development as a tool could address those things, I, I think we're just pointing out that that is a difficult pathway and as another speaker has said, you can set it, but it would need to be quite stringent and then you'd be knocking people out of that pathway, which is fine for our council because we allow it as a DA anyway. So I, I guess I'm interested, if I may, in the councils who are not using the tools under their planning schemes to be able to allow this type of development. Yeah.
Okay, well, I'd like to hand over to my colleagues from the opposition.
Thank you very much and thank you all for your attendance here today and for your submissions as well. I'm just interested, Mrs Vick is on, picking up on that point in terms of the C3 and C4 land and the challenges there. I think in your submission, you outline in Hornsby in particular, these are fairly constrained areas, bushfire risks, flooding risks.
Steep land.
Steep land and that. What, what's the process at the moment for these lands if they were to seek a secondary dwelling on them?
We don't allow them.
Don't allow.
No, we don't allow them at all. Yeah. So there is no pathway for them in our council. Yeah.
Okay, so at the moment, that's a complete prohibition. Correct, yeah. Okay, now with respect to another issue, and I'd be interested on all the councils' views on this that we heard at the beginning of the day in terms of changing the provisions around attached dwellings to detached dwellings, what's the, what's the challenge in a sense by having a permissibility with a detached dwelling compared to attached dwellings?
It depends. So in our Shire, we are a peri-urban council, so we do have rural areas. Our main agricultural pursuits out there are horticulture, so we don't have the large, big working farms. And that's, that's what we say in our submission. Our experience probably can't be applied to the outer metro rural LGAs. But we do have a big horticulture industry. But the lot sizes are a lot smaller, so we do say attached dual occupancies so that the rest of the land can still be used for agriculture. So that you, and also some of the land does have bushfire or vegetation constraints. So that's part of the reason we say that they need to be attached. Secondary dwellings don't need to be attached and rural dwellings, rural workers dwellings don't need to be attached. So we have variations in those different land uses as well, whether they're attached or not.
Thank you. Is the perspective similar in Camden and Kiama or?
I, I think so. Yeah, so a lot of the, the things mentioned, like the flooding, bushfire constraints and the steep land are all things that we do need to consider. We just additionally have challenges that are quite unique for a growth council in that we do have these big precincts that are coming online, where we are rezoning large parcels of rural land to make way for development. So, I mean, in, in the last few months, we've had sort of the next stage of Oran Park come online, so the pond and cherry planning proposal, which will deliver over two and a half thousand dwellings. So, you know, we are, we are supporting, you know, providing housing and things like that. But we do have a very specific challenge of trying to maintain that urban development within the growth areas without that bleeding into our rural zones. So in terms of having attached detached product, our, our current controls only allow for an attached dual occupancy and detached secondary dwellings. But our controls talk about having appearance of a single dwelling and being under the one roof line. So it's a lot about maintaining the rural character, which then sort of feeds back into. which then sort of feeds back into the heritage of the area, which is historically agricultural land uses.
But, Mrs Alanas, in a sense, with these controls on top of them, isn't this part of the reason why you're not seeing a whole range of applications, because people just think it's too difficult and give up?
Well, I mean, I'm not sure that within our local government area, I don't know that. I mean, that was a very sort of basic statement of how people are viewing this. But we don't want that urban development to bleed over into our metropolitan rural areas. We do have local housing strategies and rural land strategies. We've got our district plans, all talking about keeping our growth within the growth areas. So, we are providing more housing, and we are encouraging more housing, and we are encouraging housing diversity. Just this blanket approach with the rural areas is probably not suitable for our council.
And, Mrs Alanas, I certainly do understand, in terms of Camden, it's been a powerhouse of housing delivery and housing growth within New South Wales for probably the last decade, and of course, will continue beyond. But I guess there's the demarcation between what is the planned growth and areas you plan to grow. And as you quite rightly say, there's rural areas that are being transitioned into residential zoning. But then, there's also those people who are living on a large block of land in a rural area, who might want to provide a smaller property for their children or that, so that they can actually address the key issues of affordability. And as we've heard as well, intergenerational support for farming operations as well. Is that adding too much in terms of population growth potentially in an area like Camden?
No, but our planning controls allow for that to happen.
But with a lot of caveats over the top of it?
In a controlled way. Yeah.
Can I just add one thing, just to the chair said before? I mean, look, Camden, and I'm speaking on behalf of my capacity as the manager of strategic planning. I mean, we know we're in a housing crisis, we know that. And I mean, Claire mentioned we're one of the fastest growing councils in Australia. We are the fastest growing council in New South Wales, we're well aware. And, you know, Camden, through the growth areas, has been asked to take on quite a fair bit of that growth. And we're rising to that challenge. And if you have a look at our, I'm not the DA manager, so I won't speak on behalf of the DA manager, but if you look at the value of DAs, we're over seven hundred million dollars currently on the league table. No one compares to that in terms of dollar values, in terms of what we're...
Seven hundred million.
Seven hundred million.
In the pipeline of...
In terms of DA, current DA worth going through the system at this present time, right? So, Camden knows about heavy lifting, and we are a hundred percent committed to that heavy lifting. And, look, in terms of, you know, and look, our housing target at the 10-2, or whatever it is, you know, like, if you look at our predicted timeframes, we will meet our housing target. There's no issues in that. We've got a lot of, we've got a lot of development coming through the pipeline. Personally, you know, is allowing, you know, a secondary dwelling through what this inquiry is looking to do, is it going to shift that dial in terms of getting more people on the houses in Camden? Probably, I don't know, is the honest answer.
Well, that'd be a positive. It's a question of how much of a positive.
That's right. But the way I read it, and I've read through a lot of the submissions, and I've listened to some of the stuff today, that I can see that this is really, and I guess, Kent, this is where we're in the difficult scenario. We're kind of on the peri-urban fringe, where we're in Greater Sydney, we're not in Greater Sydney, we're outer regional. We are in this really delicate balanced situation where we're doing our bit. We're asked to possibly do a little bit more, but I don't know, from the perspective of, you know, is it going to be adding on top of our, what we're already doing? I'm not so sure.
I just want to add as well with the, in terms of the league table, with our DA timeframes, the others have mentioned their DA timeframes, we're sitting at about sixty-four days, which is below the statement of expectations, and we've consistently done that over the years. We do have a pretty strong focus in making sure that we get DAs out in a timely manner.
Yeah, and no, to that point, ninety percent, sorry, eighty-nine percent of those applications are within the timeframes. So, you look at the value of DAs, you look at the timeframes in which we're doing it, and I think Camden as well are truly doing it sheer.
I just want to drill down on a few details here. Just in relation to Hornsby Council, your understanding is that these reforms won't impact you at this stage, yet you've made a submission anyway, effectively raising issues in relation to the proposal, even though it won't affect you. Camden has, I guess, raised concerns about it. I appreciate there's been, I guess, some clarification as to the position of Kiama Council in relation to these. But the chair, I think, made a very valid point, which is that the majority of submissions that we've had are for these proposals, yet it's predominantly the councils that are against it. We've got a council that isn't impacted by this, that sought to actually make a submission because they're so concerned. Camden, I appreciate, what are you so scared of? Why does council, why do councils across New South Wales seem to not want to give up their kingdom and control so badly that even a council that's not impacted is here making a submission and appearing to try and scrub these proposals out?
If I can just clarify, Hornsby Council's submission was made on the basis that the terms of reference say that we're excluded, but the attached draft instrument actually says it would apply to all of New South Wales. So, we're actually not sure if we're included or excluded. So, the bulk of our submission, I guess, is to try to explain the way we manage rural lands. And I guess, yes, we do hold tight to our local planning, because we have done a rural land study recently, because we are concerned with the vitality and, you know, the support for our rural farmers, and we have heard that from our community. So, we've just done recent agritourism changes with the state government. We've done our rural land study to be able to have a look at place-based planning, and to be able to put housing growth in the rural areas and account for these. We made our secondary dwellings larger, so they're up to a hundred and twenty square metres or thirty-three percent of the principal dwelling, because that's what we're hearing from our community. So, I guess it's a little bit of pride in our local work that we do allow for this, and we do support our agricultural areas. And that's why we're saying, if we don't, if this doesn't apply to us, we support that. If it does apply to Greater Sydney, we do have concerns, and the concerns would be those things. And like I said, we can't compare to those outer Sydney rural areas that have much larger agricultural pursuits. And maybe their conservation zones or their E3 and E4 zones are applied differently to ours, but ours are applied to high ecological value lands, and that's one of the concerns we would have if it did apply to us. So, we're not trying to get in the way of it if it doesn't apply to Greater Sydney. We're just saying that we're unsure by the terms of reference, and we wanted to, I guess, assist by showing how there are some tools available for local councils if they wanted to take them up. But also, I guess, the bulk of our submission is we would support it not applying to Greater Sydney, because we do think it's different.
So, the concern I've got in relation to that answer is that the way that I interpret and the way that I'm hearing your answer, and I think the way that a lot of my people that I represent from rural and regional New South Wales would hear it, is that so long as it happens out there and doesn't happen in my backyard, that's fine. But if it happens in my backyard, I don't want it.
But we're already allowing it. Just not in our conservation zones.
Ultimately, though, you don't want to have the same set of rules that you're happy to let everyone else have. Why is that?
Because we've done local planning, which we think suits what our agricultural land users need. And what I'm hearing is that there are some councils that aren't using those local planning controls. So, I guess, that's where I'm hearing there is a problem. And that's why we're saying we don't want it to apply to us, because we have that in hand, and we are using planning controls to our availability to have that. The complying development pathway, if that went through, that would apply, I suppose, statewide, I'm not sure.
How many?
But we're pointing out that there are some concerns with that as well, no matter where that would apply.
So, you said you've just done a rural land study. How many people participated in that? How was the consultation process managed? Who, how did you go and seek the opinion of landholders?
Yep, so, we went out, we had it all on our website, we had it up for two months, we had drop-in sessions.
Nobody goes to the council website and looks at it?
We sent out letters to every rural property owner in our Shire. We had drop-in sessions and workshops out in our rural areas, in local RSLs and community halls. We had consultants come, we had agricultural consultants come, and we had planning consultants come. We had workshops where people would map where they live, where they work, where they shop, all those different paths of travel. We had quite an extensive consultation on that.
And what was the cost of that consultation?
I'd have to take that on notice, but I can give you those figures.
Okay. And what was the resultant of that? When you formulated the plan, did you increase or decrease the amount of red tape and requirement for landholders and applicants to apply for a second dwelling?
So, this is where we made second dwellings larger. So, we already allowed second dwellings.
Larger, yes.
We made them larger.
But the application process?
No, we didn't change the application process. And that didn't come up as an issue in submissions. Most of the submissions came up as a lot of pressure for subdivision. Yeah. So, a lot of them acknowledged that they can do the additional housing, but they want subdivision.
Okay, I did ask the question of Camden as well. So, just in relation to, I guess, the first question that I asked around, why are councils so concerned about losing control in the midst of a housing crisis?
So, I'll probably start by saying, like, we didn't put in an objection to the whole instrument, just its application in the Camden area. Because, as I said, Camden does have a very specific set of challenges with managing the growth. And that's a big part of our job, is managing that and making sure that it stays where we've planned it, and making sure that we manage the infrastructure and other details that go along with that. With, obviously, with the amount of development that goes on, the number of planning proposals we do, things are often going out on exhibition, and we are getting community feedback. And it's consistently raising concerns about the spillage of some of this growth, the pressures on infrastructure, roads, housing, sorry, roads, schools, emergency services. Those sorts of things are, you know, we're having to work really hard to try and keep up with those. So, as I said, keeping the growth, within the growth area, is a preferable outcome.
So, we'd better get to the government.
Oh, okay, all right, if you insist.
Thank you, Chair. I'm happy to, I've only got a couple, so you're willing to cede my time to you if I run out. First question to Kiama, thank you for your submission. You mentioned in the submission, the secondary dwellings creating additional burdens on councils' financial sustainability. I just wondered if you could talk us through how, some of the unintended consequences of that, and, you know, your concerns around the inability to charge rates for some of these.
Yeah, I think, thank you for the question. It goes to some of the ambiguity in the attachment. I think the previous speaker mentioned that they were opposed to subdivision, and I've heard that from colleagues on the table as well. As the committee would be aware, councils' rates are applied to lots and parcels rather than to individual dwellings. So, when secondary dwellings are created on properties, they have additional demand on council services, and we're not able to charge rates for those. In saying that, similar to my colleagues on the table, we do permit secondary dwellings now anyway. So, it's more just around that tailored approach. And to the previous question, you know, the one-size-fits-all does not work. You know, the rules that apply to Sydney would not necessarily work in Maori or other parts of west of the divide. So, but yes, it does cause us problems when there's unplanned rural growth, and particularly growth that occurs where there's not an ability for council to charge additional rates, but still provide additional demand on service.
So, what demand on services, like, what does that look like? Is it, you know, how do you see that impacting?
The immediate one would be use of roads, maintenance on rural roads. We can charge for some domestic waste services if there's additional bins picked up. There's additional uses on library facilities, leisure centre facilities, civic centres, the like that council provide that we wouldn't be charging rates for.
Given the numbers are so low, though, well, you know, I think you mentioned maybe ten per year.
Yep.
Would there not be an argument that that would have possibly a negligible impact?
Yeah, it could. I think it's just drawing to the committee's attention that unplanned growth, particularly secondary dwellings and additional dwellings on properties, could have additional demand on council services.
Yeah, okay.
So, not...
Yeah, yeah. No, it's a consideration. Was there anything any of the other councils wanted to add to that before I move on to my next question? So, I wanted to ask further, we mentioned, and I think Hornsby, you mentioned, about the requirement for dual locks to be attached. Was that through all the zonings, all the different zonings?
In our rural zones.
Just in your rural zones?
Yes.
Okay. And is that the case for the other councils as well?
Yep. So, in Kiama, we permit secondary dwellings, and they can be detached.
Okay.
And rural workers can be detached.
Yeah, so, but the dual locks have to be attached, is what I'm trying to get to.
Correct.
If you want a dual occupancy, it has to be attached in these rural zones. However, if you want a secondary dwelling, it can be detached, as is the case with the essential worker, or the rural, sorry, rural worker accommodation. But then, I think, it might have been Camden that said about the roof line. So, is that a consideration with?
That's all about planning controls. But yeah, that is, yeah, to reiterate that it is an attached dwelling.
Can I just make the point for the committee's benefit? Under the standard instrument order issued by the state government, councils can elect which uses to permit in their rural zones. And what I can hear from my colleagues, and I can certainly see it at other LEPs, that councils have chosen in rural land to only permit the attached form of dual occupancy permissible. But there's nothing prohibiting councils from adopting the detached definition, because that is also a definition that's standard instrument, LEP.
Preempted my next question, which was exactly that. So, why are we doing, like, why do we need to have attached dwellings? Is there, like, is there any reasons that...
So, the main reason we have it as attached is because then you can still have the agricultural pursuits on the rest of the property. It also makes sure, so, depending where it is, but it also makes sure, like I said, we don't have really large-scale agricultural pursuits or really large land areas. So, it makes it look more like rural living type arrangement rather than multiple dwellings on a property. So, we do, that's why we have the attached definition. In our urban areas, we don't actually allow dual occupancies at all. It's actually the state government that has allowed that through the low and mid-rise reforms. So, as a council, we've taken the approach, the state policy does allow secondary dwellings in urban areas. So, as a council, we've taken the approach, and we said, well, we also think they should be allowed in rural areas, because for the reasons of, you know, trying to make sure that you've got intergenerational living or, you know, rural workers accommodated, we do allow it. But the original instrument doesn't allow secondary dwellings. Dual occupancies are allowed in urban areas, and you can choose attached or detached. We allow both in our urban areas, but in our rural areas, yes, at the moment, it is attached only.
So, I think what I'm trying to get at is just the, and we've heard from previous witnesses around the inconsistency within the approach across the state, you know, a hundred and twenty-eight councils across the state. It's going to be, you know, there's the need for, to tailor local sort of, you know, planning and local solutions in local areas. I respect that. But I'm just trying to understand why, and particularly off the back of the evidence I think we heard from the New South Wales farmers, why in rural areas you must have an attached dwelling, like, taking into account as well for Hornsby. I think you mentioned that some of the agriculture uses are less intensive, they're smaller in scale. So, is it the case that, you know, why would there be such an impact if you weren't having an attached dwelling? Is what I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, I think it dates back to the pressure then on subdivision. So, some of this relates to the fact that if you do have two houses on a property and they are really spread out, there is that then pressure to be able to subdivide and sell one off. So, that's what we've been trying to avoid.
Safeguards around that, though, is, you know, to my understanding, like, just because you have a dual occupancy, that does not then automatically give you a right to subdivide?
No, that's right.
Yeah.
But there could be pressure and lobbying to do that.
There could be, but that doesn't necessarily mean that would take place.
No.
There's also the space required to service those dwellings as well. So, I think someone mentioned earlier about the onsite sewer... onsite sewer management and, and things like that. Having those sort of co-located does sort of help alleviate some of that rural land fragmentation that you'll start to see if we do, yeah, start putting them further apart, kind of leaves parts of the land unusable for those rural agricultural purposes. So if we kind of keep them clustered, then there's, there's further opportunities for those rural land uses. Additionally, like it, it can just come back to the visual, you know, impacts and having it appear to be one dwelling does go a long way within some of our rural villages and, and the community's perception of, of what a dual occupancy is.
And, and just further to that as well, secondary dwellings in that permissible in the rural zone, there's no distance, separation distance in terms of, of that as well. There's a size, the separation distance is not, like, there's no prescribed distance there. Yeah.
Now, I heard from Kiama about the rural workers, the definition, the rural workers dwelling definition. So I appreciate that and park that to one side. Is that the same approach that, say, Kiama has? Would that be the same approach that Camden or Hornsby would take to the interpretation of that rural workers dwellings? It's in quite a liberal sort of approach or?
Yeah, sorry, I, I might have missed, missed that point. But yeah, the rural workers dwelling definition allows for accommodation for workers on a, on an agricultural development.
You have mentioned that point a few times. How often does that happen in the Hornsby area?
Not, not often. No.
Yeah, wouldn't you thought so?
Yeah, because we don't have big enough agricultural pursuits, but it is, it is permitted. Yeah. So the report that I give you, I can break down the, how many attached dual occupancies, how many secondary dwellings and how many rural dwellings that we have, rural workers dwellings that we have approved. But yeah, it's probably not as big a demand as some of the larger, more, you know, intensive agricultural LGAs, I would imagine. Yeah.
What would be the case for Camden?
We might have to come back with that one, but I mean, look again, I mean, on the urban fringe, I mean, I mean, look, by, by the time we're done with our growth, we'll, we'll end up with one third of our rural land left. You know, Camden started before the growth era, it's pre twenty.
Or dering.
Yeah, like, you know, like, there's a lot of that type of stuff, but it's not on that kind of large scale agricultural, which is where I can understand where some of the farmers and co might be coming from because, you know, and again, it comes back to the pressures on being on the urban fringe. We're caught in two battles here.
Yeah.
We're caught with being on the, the urban, uh, urban rural fringe, but also pumping out the greenfield and delivering the housing for the future Sydney residents. And we're taking that. People are coming from all over Sydney to come and live in Camden for lots of different reasons.
Thank you. Thanks, Chair.
You got one more question in your ears?
Oh, no. Look, at the, at the, at the time, Chair, I'm going to be, I'm going to be.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll, I'll quickly, we've got thirty seconds. I'm, all, all three councils have said that, that, yeah, we've already got this process to allow the second, second dwelling with variations. I would be keen, you may not know off the top of your head, but I would be keen if you could get back to me on notice, what is the ratio between your approvals and your declines? Any, can we have a stab in the dark at the moment? Or are you going to have to get back to someone?
I would have to, I, I know that we did do some research about refusals in general when, when, you know, the government has asked us about the housing crisis. And I believe our refusal are about four percent of DAs lodged and that's for everything. But I would need to interrogate to have a look at the subs.
Generally four percent, which is pretty good. We're just going to see if it's significantly higher for these detached, these second dwellings. Okay, well, I think.
Hang on, the, the other, the other witnesses might know theirs. Do you know your rejection rate?
We'll have to take that one on notice.
Oh.
It'd be in the same ballpark, but yeah, we don't, don't know.
I'll, I'll get the specifics on detail for you, but yes, ours would be very low across the board. Most things get approved.
Well, just in that point, can I just ask one last question? Based on that, if, if your rejection rate is so low, you know, in, in, in single digits and, you know, certainly in the lower part of the single digits, that would mean that the major, vast majority of the applications are compliant. In those circumstances, why is it so, yeah, why is it so difficult to, to, you know, why are we just approving these things and, and getting the houses out there?
It is a merit assessment. So, you know, there may not, it might not be compliant.
It doesn't need to be so expensive and onerous though. Like this is why people are so frustrated with councils. Like the, the
Where's familiar?
And, oh, no, no, no.
Question?
Just before we wind up, so the key thing is we, we're keen to see the, on the second dwelling applications, the, the, the decline ratio there. That would be helping form our opinion. Anyway, it's come to three fifteen, maybe even three sixteen. So thank you for your evidence. The secretary will contact you in relation to the questions on notice. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.